We're going to call this Board of Supervisors meeting back together, and we're also now with the Planning Commission, and I want to turn this over to Richard. Turn this over because you have to open up the Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Can I have the clerk call the role for the Planning Commission, please?
Yes. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Duca.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Kessley.
Here.
Commissioner Ronsdon is absent.
Okay, great. So, we're going to, a couple of things upfront. If we have something that we want to do and vote on, the order is that the Planning Commission would look at that and vote first, and then the Board of Supervisors would vote on that after. Just want to make sure, I think we got a little mixed up with that last time. Correct, Kim? Yeah, that's what we're doing. All right, so we're going to start off with our staff presentation. Thank you. Jeff will be here, I'm sure. He'll be here. Yep. We'll call on Mr. Powers, he's an ex-lawyer, recovering lawyer, so. Sorry to interrupt you, she just rambles and it's hard sometimes, so.
You all ready? Good afternoon, your Board and members of the Commission. Thank you for having the General Plan Update Team back again. We're here for our final joint Board of Supervisor and Planning Commission Work Session Number Four. We're going to be presenting on the last three chapters of our Alternatives Report. What I'd like to do is go ahead and introduce the General Plan Update Team and our consultant team that's here today. We have Kim Perlehart, who's the Director of the Planning Division, Clay Downing, who's one of our planners on the team, we have Shelley Sussman, who's a planner on the team, and I'm happy to introduce Lynn Socha, who's actually a Civic Spark Climate Fellow. It's part of the AmeriCorps program. We have her for a year, and she's with us to help build a robust climate change program for the General Plan Update. We also have Minteer Harnish, our lead consultants with us. We have Jim Harnish behind us, and Rick Rust, who is going to lead the presentation today and provide responses during the presentation, although, of course, all of us are available for responses. And I'd like to mention, we did receive two public comment letters that we don't have for your Board. We just received them, however, from Amanda Fagan, representing the Navy, and from Kathy Lottz. Those will be added to the record and posted. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Rust.
Good afternoon, Chair, the rest of the Board, and to the Planning Commission Chair and the Planning Commissioners. Thank you for having us here again today, and we're going to go through with you this afternoon, the final sections of the Alternatives Report. And at the end of the night, well, hopefully the day, you'll be asked to make some recommendations here about the approval of Chapters Seven through Nine, and some other options that we'll be going through in the program relative to some alternatives that we'll present along the way. It's important to note that at this stage in the Alternatives Report, and actually, one of our earlier meetings, it was asked, is this normal to do an Alternatives Report? And why are we doing this now? What's the whole purpose? And hopefully, today, in the conversation with the public, in the conversation with yourselves, the Commissioners, this will be a good explanation for why we go through these kind of exercises, because there are, it's a very complicated document, it's a very complicated set of needs and desires, and having this chance to talk to both the Planning Commission and the Board at the same time, get the public input, as we start to look at some of these ideas that will frame the future general plan. Nothing you're looking at tonight is a done deal. We're not asking you to approve or necessarily vote on the approval of anything today. What we're asking for is your direction, your guidance, your nod as to which way you'd like us to go on a few important questions we go forward. And of course, if something comes up and we need to take a modified version, we're glad to take that input, provide other suggestions about how we might move forward as we move Some slides you've seen before as far as where we're at, it can get you acquainted with the stage we're at. So we're at the end of Phase Four, which is one of seven phases, as we go through the overall project, with the completion date looking towards spring of 2020. That's the original schedule we had, and we're still on schedule to perform in that On the next slide, we're just highlighting some of the key documents that have been prepared. Several of these you've already seen that are feeding down into the Alternatives Report. So there's been a lot of public input and comment, there's been work from your staff members and directors here in the county, from your technical advisory committees, and the public at large, as far as providing inputs and ideas. In fact, some of the things you'll see today, as far as some policy ideas, as far as Chapter Nine, are the result of inputs that we've heard during those earlier conversations, not necessarily our opinions on where you want to go, but again, looking at where the county wants to go with the plan. So our last piece here is kind of guiding us towards a preferred combination of pieces, if you will, a preferred direction as far as where we're going. The whole idea is from here that we can go forward and develop the draft general plan. We'll set a series of meetings with the Planning Commission, I think we have up to five, and then following on with meetings with the Board to review the draft before we finalize the draft programmatic environmental impact report. The general plan itself is the project description for the environmental impact report, so it's important that we have buy-in as far as where we're going when we get to that point and before we finalize the environmental review. So the things you see here today, where we're asking for your guidance on, should we go and look at these kind of options to include in the plan, are just that. Your nod that that is worthy of looking at, and if you have any clarification for us on the directions we may take, we'd appreciate that insight, and then we'll go off and develop the pieces for your review at the next step. As we saw at our meeting we had in July, we went through the first six chapters of the Alternatives Report, coming a broad range of topic areas. And today, we're looking at the last three chapters, the alternative evaluation criteria, which were basically just a reiteration of the guiding principles. At one of our earlier meetings, we had agreed that that was the best evaluative criteria, was to use the old guiding principles, and you've received an addendum to that fact to provide a few word changes that were approved earlier by the Board and not carried over to that chapter. Chapter Eight, Land Use Alternatives, talks about how we might apply changes. If you remember, at our last meeting, we talked about a land use designations 2.0, and then we agreed on a 1.5, which was somewhere in between there, and so this shows you how we came up with that. And we'll talk to you a little bit today about the application of that, and clarify a little bit about the positioning of the general plan versus area plans, community maps, and the zoning code itself, and how those all work together towards the final destination. And then Chapter Nine is a set of policy topics. And again, these were derived from inputs we received from the last two years and the work that's gone on before, and this is a chance to look at the broad topics where people asked us to look into something, and see if we can get your nod about those, or if there's some that you'd like to have taken out, or some that you would like to provide some distinct clarification about the direction you'd like to go with that topic area. So we covered the Chapter Seven. Again, they said you had an addendum sheet which matched it up to what the Board took action on earlier to update that. There's not really much to do, Chairman, as far as action on this with those addendums, and this would be up to the Chair as to whether you wish to take a break at each chapter, but that's pretty much the end of the conversation on Chapter Seven. Okay. Chapter Eight, the Land Use Alternatives. So today, we're looking at talking about what are the land use designations, how those were derived, and how those are applied. There's also a discussion about the regional housing needs assessment, and how that comes into arena numbers, and how that comes into the calculation for our future housing element. Now, your next housing element is due in 2021, and we've heard some questions about, well, how can you get the housing element done when the general plan's due in mid-2020? The answer to that is what we had planned all along, as far as our scope of work, et cetera, was to move the housing element forward, to make sure that we consider the future of housing as we develop the other policies in the general plan. For, after all, the general plan, if you look at it, is a very interconnected document. A lot of the land use pieces have implications for the future of housing, circulation, mobility have implications as far as transporting people, or even looking at the environmental justice aspects, where housing is located, and accessibility to jobs, and housing is an important piece, exposure to different kinds of hazards, materials, et cetera, make sure housing's in the right place, make sure we have the public services. There's a lot to do still on that, and we're not planning to finish the housing element at the same time as the overall general plan, but we want to make sure that all the other parts that support that housing element are in play as best as we can do it up to that point, and to get the actual housing element started, and we will finalize the housing element at the end, after the general plan itself has been adopted. And we'll also use this information to help guide the development of the environmental impact report, so that it is set up to cover the housing element when it's eventually completed.
I have a question, please. So, we won't have, we won't do the housing element, we won't complete the housing element at the same time we complete the general plan, but we'll do many things that will facilitate the completion of the housing element. Is that an accurate way to say that?
Absolutely, sir.
And there's some benefits of doing that. I can see that from an efficiency standpoint. What about the impact of the timeline? Does the timeline stay the same, as long, if we keep this housing element, sort of the preparatory work on the housing element, as you have in your recommended action?
Absolutely. We're still on schedule for that mid-2020 timeline.
And we can do that using what housing element numbers? The ones that we, you know, talked about at the last meeting, which was the most recent SCAG numbers, you talked about 2013. If you could help, it'll help me sort of digest the rest of this if I know what numbers you would be using for that. I'll turn that question to either staff or to you.
Well, the general plan at this stage would be incorporating your current housing element as we prepare draft components of the new housing element. You won't actually be approving the new housing element until the 2021 timeframe. We don't get the new SCAG numbers actually until fall of 2019, so completing and getting it through environmental review in time to finish the general plan itself will not be possible. What we intend to do is reformat your current housing element and incorporate it. We intend to develop the materials and some of the initial policies, and if there are policies that are in other elements that will support the ultimate numbers or the ultimate direction, then we can bring that forward as part of the general plan.
We had a fairly thorough discussion about what numbers to use, the 2013, the most recent SCAG, issues were brought up that the most recent SCAG numbers hadn't been vetted by staff yet, now they have been vetted by staff, and that staff seems to agree that SCAG has got it right, they're substantially lower numbers. Will we be using those numbers for your preliminary work on the housing element? Okay, great.
Sorry about that. What we've presented in the chapter is to make an assumption that we're going to get the same RENA allocation for the next housing element cycle as the current housing element cycle, and I believe that's about 1,000 dwelling units for all income levels. And the reason we're doing that is, the, first off, the SCAG numbers are in draft format, and also, we don't know what the RENA allocation is going to be, because there's quite a few state laws that may affect our ability to use our current inventory, and we may have to carry that forward. So what we're doing is we're just recommending, we use the baseline assumption of what we got last housing element cycle, which I believe is about 1,000 dwelling units, and just look for those sites, first off, with our current inventory, and then potentially for new inventory if we think that might need to be identified based on the new changes in state law.
So how do you square that with the discussion we had in the Board's direction to use the most recent SCAG numbers, even though they're in draft form?
Well, the SCAG population numbers, I don't know to what level that's going to translate into the RENA numbers, so we're trying to basically align RENA numbers. We can, if we get a lower number in 2019, then we work with that number, but we're just trying to cover our bases with what potentially could happen.
So what was the impact of the Board's fairly thorough discussion and vote to actually use the SCAG numbers?
Well, SCAG is going to use, I believe, if those draft numbers get finalized, for the RENA, but we don't know what those RENA numbers are going to be.
But what's the impact of the Board of Supervisors giving direction on that? Just that we're just going to ignore that?
We're using those as the growth projections for the general plan.
Okay, so they're going to be used for the growth projections, but not for the housing element?
Well, the housing element, because we don't have the RENA numbers, again, we have to make assumptions, yeah.
I realize that, yeah. Okay, so we're using them, we're using them for the growth projection, but not for the housing element?
Yes.
Great.
Well, and that's what we're recommending, it's up to the Board. We're just recommending that as the baseline.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I follow up on that? What do we do in the future? Do we amend those numbers in the future? How does that, if we use the current numbers, the RENA numbers, 1,000, do we amend in the future? How do we handle that?
I'm sorry. I was going to address Supervisor Bennett's question a little bit more.
Go ahead.
And I'm looking at a document, a set of slides that was produced by SCAG, when they're starting to go out and do their presentations and work with jurisdictions, and they're saying that they have a list of things that they're going to be considering when they develop their final numbers, which, by the way, according to this, says final RTP SES, well, the draft RENA allocation comes winter 2020, that's on their most recent set of slides, but the things that they'll be considering are population and household projections, which feeds into exactly your question, that, you know, we would be using those SCAG projections as part of that, or we would expect them to be using those, household size, overcrowding, replacement need, vacancy rates, cost burdened households, there's also a GHG consideration that they're building in to their SCAG projection in terms of jobs, housing balance, as Rick was saying. So all of those things would get fed into the process that they would use to create their final allocation.
Can I ask a question on that, Supervisor Bennett? But thank you for bringing that up. You pointed out state law is stating certain requirements as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you could just make sure that we know what the state law is projecting as well.
And the question I had was, how do we amend in the future if we use those numbers now? Or do we?
That's a question for you as part of the EIR.
The numbers feed into a wide range of topics that are covered by the general plan and the eventual EIR that goes along with it. So the numbers that the Board gave us direction on, we will put those into play, and they will look at implications such as transportation impacts, public service and utility impacts, recreational demands, all this will be accomplished underneath the population number that was approved by the Board. So we will use that to guide our direction on the overall general plan. As far as the housing element, there's been a number of changes in state law that we need to start to develop the background for, and it'll be part of what we do with other elements. For instance, the ability to provide infrastructure. So we will look at your current sites, make sure that there still is the ability to serve those areas, that those sites are still valid in the state, because the states put a lot of emphasis on making sure that the sites that you claim for producing housing are viable sites, and they will be asking you if they're still viable sites. Now, while the county can't itself always produce housing, that's left out for the market or service providers, you need to make sure that there's nothing in the way. We need to make sure that we don't change the density that was allowed on any of these sites, that we haven't changed any of the planning parameters that would make them be more costive, more expensive to build. So we have to make sure that we don't get in the way of what was already put in there as available sites, and then also provide the other, if there's additional needs that might be required, which, as we've shown, it doesn't look like we need to change a lot of land designations going forward, because you already have appropriate land uses designated, but that will all be part of the evaluation that we use going forward and how those numbers are applied.
Part of the process, okay.
All right, general plan designations. So when we looked at the last Board meeting, again, we talked about the 1.5 designation, which is basically listed on Table 8-1 in the Alternatives Report. One to highlight again, Page 8-2 tries to clearly state, there's, if you're looking at the county, you have the rural, agricultural, and open space designations under the general plan. None of those areas are proposed for any type of change. Those are all subject to SOAR and other guidelines, the guidelines for early development. There is nothing proposed for change there. I think there had been some confusion, because we did have rural designations that were inside of existing community and urban areas, so it's kind of an overlap, which is why we threw a prefix on the front of those, just to make sure there wasn't confusion in the future about what was rural rural and what was not, as far as SOAR was concerned. And that's an important thing to look at, is just how the general plan, area plans, and zoning work together. We've heard some conversations about, we're raising the intensity, we're adding much more housing into these areas. The fact is that the general plan provides a broad framework, it has to cover all your zoning designations, all your area plan designations, but that doesn't mean that everybody can have that number of units. The zoning and the area plans themselves further define what can be done on areas, and if you wanted to change that, you'd have to go through a process to have that changed. A good example is open space, and the example I'm showing you is on the books today. This isn't something we're proposing, but right now, you have an open space designation in the general plan. Now, you have some designations that go all the way out to 160-acre minimum lot size, that's driven by zoning. So the fact that open space says 10 acres minimum, I'll put an asterisk on there, 20 acres next to agriculture, there are areas in the county that require 160-acre minimum. And the same thing works with residential designations. If we allow three dwelling units per acre, and a certain area plan or zoning only allows one dwelling per acre, that's the same kind of thing as that 160-acre open space. That is the minimum that's allowed. And if somebody wanted to change it, there is a general plan ability, they wouldn't have to go for a general plan amendment, but they'd still have to go through an area plan change and/or zoning change, which would come through the process here. So it's not like we're opening the doors and changing the designations, it works by this parameter here. And in looking at these, we look at the general plan as providing the broad policy guidance that's used to guide the county. We look at the area plans and the community maps as providing the localized flavor, if you will, for how that area, how that community should develop, and that changes some of the densities that are allowed, based on that previous area plan. And then we look at zoning, which gets even more definitive, and is used more for the development side of things, gets into setbacks and other kinds of coverages that might be out there looking at that property. So they all have their place, and the important thing is they all need to be consistent with each other. Now, in doing these, we looked at both the area plan designations, we also looked at zoning. Now, zoning was an important part of this, because zoning was a consistent fabric across the whole county, and it was also much more definitive as far as what was allowed into that zoning. So we use that as a first cut to figure out what these designations might be under the general plan, and then we check those against the area plans as well, and this will be something that'll be carried forward in the general plan itself. But when it comes down to it, the general, the area plans have to be consistent with the general plan, and the zoning has to be consistent with the area plans and the general plan itself. So that hierarchy has to be maintained across the spectrum. As far as the new general plan designations, did want to point out, you've got some maps in the document. Again, you're not being asked to approve them, this is not the land use diagram, it's not looking for your blessing today. We wanted to give you an example of if we applied these, what they would look like going forward. Again, we talked about the fact that these designations here on the left didn't change, agriculture, open space, rural. We also have areas of public land, which are federal or state properties, which the county doesn't have direct jurisdiction over, those didn't change either. And then we have urban reserve overlay, which is used next to some of the communities just prior to annexation and kind of movements, and those also did not change. But if you look at the county overall, everything's got a color on it besides light gray, didn't These are the proposed designations, or a modification of that 1.5, I guess we have a 1.6 perhaps. We did find inside of some of the existing communities and urban areas, there were designations such as open space, ag, and rural. Now, these are not the general plan designations that are protected under SOAR, but they can be confused. We call one rural, and we call another one rural, and they're different roles, and at one point, we thought we could show the map of the existing communities and urban, and we could use that as a definitive between the two, but obviously, from public input, that was more confusing than we'd hoped. So we put ECU, or Existing Community Urban, anybody has a better acronym, we'd be glad to hear it, but ECU R A N O S. We have a number of different residential designations, a mixed-use category, commercial, commercial plan development, industrial, and then the new parks and rec. Now, the parks and rec is not defined as far as its buildability, but as we had understood from the Board, the desire here was to create a designation under zoning that would provide for a recreational designation for lands that are publicly held, and so overall, these weren't out there for development, but something could be defined if the Board would like to direct towards that as far as providing a number, but the overall use was against a public property, and so the actual definition was not as critical.
Could I ask a question?
Rick.
Go ahead, Supervisor Sarah.
I was going to ask a question. Over in the, maybe second, in the El Rio Nyland Acres area, we have no parks at all. Is there any way that we, how can we apply the open space, you know, to, for parks and recreation for that area? Because there's really, within the community, there's no space, you know, to build a park, whether it's El Rio or Nyland Acres, so how can we apply that open space section to the El Rio Nyland Acres area?
For many area plans and communities, the best way to approach it is probably through those level of plans, where you actually can get community input as far as where a park, or the size, or facilities of that park may be best accommodated. We would typically propose to include policies that would talk about the targets and expectations to service the different unincorporated communities, what is expected for a per-population number. It's also very important, especially if you look at now with the state law and environmental justice, that we look at distribution and placement of parks and rec facilities. As you mentioned, some areas you represent don't have anything nearby.
In fact, I think Nyland Acres, I think when we set up the community center there, is my understanding that according to the amount of people and acres that we had, that we should have had at least, I think, 14 acres a park, and right now, we have zero, you know, so.
Right.
Question, can we then work with the general plan to include those areas under the open space?
Yeah, and there's two common ways that could be accomplished. Again, part of this probably would take place at an area plan, community map adjustment, but in the general plan itself, we usually can set targets for certain areas, define the amount, give a ratio per population that would be expected on a incorporated community, and on the general plan map, we can also put a symbol to show a generalized location, leaving the actual placement of that left open to the acquisition of the property, the local needs and desires.
Mr. Chair, I would like to see that, you know, be applied to that general plan designation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
A couple of questions. You have RPD at 30 dwelling units an acre, and yet you have high density at 20 dwelling units an acre.
I believe in the current version of the document, you have it says 20 dwelling units per acre. The slide, I think, may not have been refreshed.
Should not the RPD have a maximum as equivalent to the high density, for example?
It does, in your report, it should have the 20 in there at this point.
They should both be 20, then?
That's what we're currently...
Okay, maybe...
I believe the RPD you're referring to is the, there's an RPD in the zoning ordinance that allows for 30 dwelling units without a suffix.
This chart right here has the RPD at 30 dwelling units an acre, whereas residential high density is 20 dwelling units. It doesn't seem like you should have an RPD that exceeds your high density number.
And that's just currently what is allowed in the RPD zone without a, in the zoning ordinance currently, so we're just trying to reflect what's currently in the zoning ordinance for the RPD zone district, because we do have 11 parcels currently designated RPD without a, what's called a suffix specifying the number of dwelling units. So that would, that would account for those, and the bulk of those are all exempt properties, meaning they're owned by, by local government agencies or housing authority, things like that, but that's, that's why we put that there.
Maybe we could just take a little bit closer look at it at a future time to see if, because, just because you have it on the ground doesn't mean that's the way you want it in your general plan. You may want to have your RPD maximum densities equivalent to the maximum density that you're allowed to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually, I'll retract what I had said, it looked like the table left it at 30. Now, the 30 originally came from the fact that in the coastal zone, there is a coastal RPD that allows up to 30 dues per acre today, and so to cover the coastal zone, as far as not creating inconsistency, it was put at 30. Now, there was discussions about going to 20, because as you mentioned, it matches what the rest of the unincorporated, non-coastal areas use, and that's part of the problem in that while we do have a coastal zoning ordinance, and we have a non-coastal zoning ordinance, we have a both general plan. And so we...
I think that brings out a really good point, that it's really hard to do a general plan for all areas in the county when they're so diverse. So when we're talking about something like what is good in El Rio, and what we'd like to see there, and what high density is there, or even very low density, it's completely different in another area of the county. So I understand that there is that. Another question I had was regarding very low density... Another question I had was regarding very low density residential. That 10,000 would be the minimum? Is that right, minimum lot size?
Correct.
Okay. So then the, that would essentially be everything from very low density 10,000 to rural, which is two acres. Would that be right? So that, that 10,000 would be essentially 10,000 to almost two acres? Because once you get to two acres, it would be considered rural. Is that right?
Under the very low density, you could have zoning designations that go lower than that, but they couldn't go higher than that. So you could have a two dwelling units per acre category that would be consistent with this very low density residential. You could have a one dwelling unit per acre that would be consistent with this very low density residential. You could not have a four dwelling unit per acre. So that's, you're correct. It's kind of a cap on how dense you can go. So as you go down the table, it's sort of the maximum you can go. You can go less than that, and the zoning would provide that definition. So in an area where you wanted one acre lots, it would fall under the very low density residential general plan. It would fall under, in our one kind of category for the zoning.
I think that's probably what I say is pretty accurate.
Yes, it was, ma'am, sorry.
So then the only thing that I would just leave with is that if you're only doing the 30 dwelling units per acre for RPDs because you have some on the coastal zoning, maybe you could reflect that in these numbers instead of saying throughout the entire county because everybody will want an RPD so they can get to the 30. You know, that where you want it is where you should be planning for it.
Well, and we can do that. In open space, we have a definition that you could be 10 acres except next to agriculture, 20. We can put that kind of an "and" statement in here and say, if, if you're in the coastal area, you can go up to 30, otherwise you're 20.
Can I, one other question. Rick, this is, we're talking about how many units per acre and so forth. The question I have is, and you're probably going to talk about it, how is a low, low income and very low, moderate income houses, how are they going to be distributed in, in the 2020 general plan?
Well, we're looking at, again, that gets into some of the RENA questions. Now, we have the existing sites that were developed for the old RENA numbers that still have not all been developed. We will revalidate those sites as part of this process and part of preparation for your later housing element. If there is the need for additional sites that we foresee using the SCAG number that we expect, we can bring that number forward as part of this process for your consideration as far as how we might address it, with the final designation of those sites being later in 2021.
So you're going to look at different sections and see how many sites are available for that per neighborhood or.
Yeah, we know how many places have residential high density. There are HD at 20 dwelling units per acre would be the area we could put in low density, I'm sorry, low income, affordable housing. Those would be the areas that would be suitable for that. And as part of this, we will go through and look at the sites you have, validate that they meet all the current state requirements, and that we have the right possible numbers being.
The state requires that, right? The state requires that.
The state requires us now to make sure those sites are to a higher level of viability, that they have services available, that we know how we'll get the services to those sites. They are in proximity to transportation, to employment, that they do not have environmental justice issues associated with them as far as their placement. So we'll be going through that as part of this general plan update so that if it influences, for instance, the land use element, we can make those adjustments at this point with the final tweaks perhaps happening in 2021 when you do the housing element.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you. I think this is all, makes a lot of sense. It took some understanding. As you're saying, make sure that we're understanding that all of this applies to, when you're talking about ag and open space and rural, only to the existing community. So I appreciate that and really respecting the SOAR boundaries and understanding where we can and can't do. And it is more simple, I think, easier to understand than I think what we have currently in place. So I do appreciate what you've got there. There's one little funky thing with RPD that I would, I would work on, but other than that, I think it's, it's done well. Thanks.
We could, we can make that kind of adjustment to reflect that, yes. At the last meeting, it was asked, how was this all fallout for the zoning? Now, because we showed a whole zoning matrix in the back for how we developed the general plan designations, by default, every general plan designation we're proposing is consistent with the zoning code. This table was asked for last boarding meeting, and so we're bringing that forward as part of the document. This is currently Table 8.2, I believe. So we kind of went through this a little bit before. We looked at where the existing community and urban designations were, again, leaving out all the other designations. We did use the zoning as far as providing a context across the fabric of the county. We did look at the area plan designations as well, and the general plan that are being proposed will accommodate all the different planning levels that are out there. Again, we use zoning because it provided us an equal basis across the county and because the zoning is supposed to be consistent with the area plans as we stand, it was a good stand-in for some of that to make sure that we were on the right page. So this is just graphically, you can see the area we colored was the area we intended to. It was the existing community or urban areas. The colors were brought over from using that table that's now in the appendix showing how we converted those different designations and what we came up with. Now, this would be the basis for the maps in the future. They do have the boundaries on them showing where the term existing community and urban exists. The existing community boundary is important as far as the designation, as far as the guidelines for early development, and that will be in the policies as far as a defined map. And it'll be on the land use diagrams as shown in Step 3. That green dotted outline is an existing community designation today. These are the maps we produced just for the audience to understand what was in the overall package at the back of Chapter 8. The online version, these maps are actually 11 by 17, so you are able to zoom in a little closer. Apologize if they're a little bit small. We tried to give you as much information without printing a whole tree's worth of paper. But it does show you in the upper left, all the legends that apply, the existing zoning in the bottom left, the existing general plan in the bottom right, and then the proposed general plan as applied in the upper right corner. And again, that green dotted line is what designates our existing communities as far as meeting our growth boundaries. Let me catch up with myself here. One of the alternatives you're being asked for is dealing with this regional housing needs allocation. There is an option that we can move forward to just changing the land use designations as proposed and leaving the RENA parts out of this. Again, we don't have the final numbers. What we're going to do is get ourselves as prepared as we possibly can, bring forward any decisions that need to be made that would help us meet our future needs, using the population projections and information that had been blessed by the board at the previous workshop to, as our guidance point and not going above that number because that's what the board had provided to us as a, a projection to use. So we'll be using that going forward. Again, we don't see this as being any kind of constraint on meeting the deadlines for the overall general plan. The housing element itself will be finalized in the 2021 timeframe, whereas the general plan will be finalized in 2020. And the IR from the general plan will be designed so that it can be used and relied upon in the approval of the housing element.
I believe I heard something different than what I think I heard from staff, and so I just want to try to clarify here. Could easily be, I think you just said, going forward with the regional housing needs allocation, you're not going to use numbers higher than what the board approved at the last meeting. And staff is saying, we're not going to go forward with the SCAG numbers. We're going to go forward with the, what we were given our last time, which is a different number than the draft SCAG number. And the draft SCAG number is what the board approved. So is that.
The numbers that the board approved are what we'd be using.
The numbers that the board approved are what we'll use for the regional housing needs allocation?
1,500.
For the population, for things such as transportation, other kind of effects. We don't have the RENA numbers now. We can.
But in terms of the land use, but, but in terms of what land we will make sure we designate, as staff's mentioned, if we have to re-designate some land to accommodate those needs, right? We will be using the.
I can answer that. We're just, what we're looking for is just an assumption. So we want, we're going to use as an assumption the RENA allocation we got last cycle just to look at what we have available in the county, especially given all the new laws and all the constraints that they're, they're requiring. That's just an assumption. Now, we don't know what the RENA is going to be, but what, what we're hoping could happen is we've at least looked at our current inventory with our current housing element. We've looked at where the sites might qualify based on state law, and when those numbers do come out in October 2019, we'll know where they could potentially plug into. So we're really just looking at a potential inventory with a, an assumption, but that's not the RENA number. We just wanted to use a baseline that.
I agree. I think we're talking.
Consistent.
Maybe, maybe we're talking past each. I agree, but when you are, you're saying we're going to use that number as an assumption to see if we have, where we could put those numbers. If the RENA, if, if the RENA numbers come out like the SCAG numbers, lower than that assumption, we may have, in the general plan, said, oh, we're, we're short here and short there. We may have made changes for the, for the old number that we wouldn't necessarily be making if we knew what the, what the RENA numbers were.
Well, I believe as timing goes, we won't have an adopted general plan. We'll be at the point where your, your board will have looked at the draft general plan and will have looked at the inventory. So again, we're just going to provide you with some more detailed information about the RENA inventory and, and where there are potential opportunities, given our current inventory from the housing element that we have now. So really, it's, we're not going to be at a place where anything's adopted. We're just getting direction on.
Like a holding number.
Just to do further research on our current inventory in the context of all the new state laws.
Correct. If we were to re-designate sites, that would be with the final housing element would be in 2021, not at this time now.
It seems like from our, our last meeting, we have a lot more capacity than we need for meeting the RENA numbers. So using what we've already received from SCAG, it looks like we're doing fine, that we're not going to have to rezone properties. So I don't know if there's really a need to jump into this prior to getting the numbers and what would be the benefit of doing that now, before we get the numbers. It seems to me that's just like another exercise that we may have to, you know, go back and do again.
That's what I was inferring, that if we were to have to actually re-designate some sites, that would be done with the housing element update in 2021, not at this point now. What we're more concerned with is making sure that all the rest of the general plan is not in the way of what needs to be done to produce housing.
Mr. Chair, would that hold up, would that hold up anything? But I know you're going to come up with a draft. We just want a number to place there temporarily until we get those numbers in 2019, October 2019. Is that correct?
As far as housing sites, that'll be done officially with the housing element itself.
And, go ahead. And if we, excuse me, if we do, we go with the numbers that you're talking about, we are still not changing any zonings or anything like that. We're just moving ahead and looking at what we currently have. Correct? So we're not doing any modifications. We're just moving ahead, looking at what we currently have. I think that's what the fear is, at least what I'm hearing, is that there, changes would be happening. And so that's what I was confirming.
Our impetus is mostly to make sure the rest of the general plan is in a good shape to support that next step.
Okay, thank you.
Actually change the land though. And that was correct, Supervisor Parks, mentioning the fact that the, at our last meeting, we talked about the fact there is more capacity than would be absorbed in this time period going forward. There probably, there may be some fine tuning that'll happen with the housing element, but instead of being speculative with that designation right now, we will wait for the housing element numbers, and that'll happen after the general plan's adopted. So as we mentioned, if you'd like us not to do that, again, we're not looking to change maps. We would like to go forward and look at this holistically just to revalidate the sites, make sure that we're meeting state law overall as far as limitations on the siting of housing and the production of housing, and make sure we have that cleared up. But this alternative would be to just ignore that completely, which would mean that besides doing the housing element 2021, you'd probably be doing a general plan amendment in other parts of the document. The proposal we have here keeps you from having to do that broader general plan amendment through the rest of the document. But that is one of your alternatives. Alternative B is keep it the way it is, as far as not talking about housing now, but we're talking about the general plan designations. That would be going back to calling things existing communities and urban in the broad sense. Our discussion was that that didn't provide enough direction from the general plan side light, even though the area plans are part of the direction and provide some more definition. We felt the general plan still needs to provide a little better guidance as far as what's expected in these areas, and we feel we have a good middle point now where the area plans still provide the direction for the local communities, whereas the general plan provides the broad policy guidance. But this is an alternative to go back to the way they were. One other piece that's in the discussion in front of you today is talking about cities. Now, as far as the county goes, the incorporated cities are not under your jurisdiction, although sometimes you might want them to be. But what happens inside the cities is their direction. But currently, they have a general plan designation, which sort of alludes to the fact that you have something to say about what's built in there. Our recommendation is that we just designate these as city, incorporate city within the general plan and not have any direction as far as what we think they should be doing there. So all this does is turn it into a gray spot on the map. It recognizes where those cities are, and you get that connection between the two. So this is where.
Before you go on with that real quick.
Yes, sir.
Does everybody understand what he was saying? We just call them cities, no problem? Everybody's good with all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, makes sense, okay.
I like calling cities cities.
I highlighted this a little earlier, but in order to maintain consistency with the guidelines for early development, we are maintaining a designation called Existing Community. It'll be shown on the land use diagram. This is an example of one of the local communities showing that boundary. And so that designation and that connection to guidelines for early development is maintained in our opinion, looking at, reading through that guidance and what it calls out as far This is our last piece on this, which is talking about this open space parks and recreation zone. We see this as probably being part of a zoning ordinance update in the future and would develop programs and plans towards that. And our understanding is this would be designations for properties that are in the public realm today and would designate them further from being just regular open space, but to a more protected parks and recreational capability. At this time, we don't have those locations identified. We'd certainly look for input on that. We were looking towards a policy that would give this towards a future update as far as an action item for the county is to actually find and designate these under a zoning change. But the general plan itself would need to call out this requirement and this action item to be done in the future. But certainly, we'd look for your clarification. This was a board-directed addition.
So Rick, so Rick, the, in this section, in order to convert a park into a, excuse me, a property into a park, it has to be public.
In this case, this was recommended for a public access. This is more in the broad county area as opposed to inside an existing community. And an existing community is part of that community map or its area plan. There could be work as far as identifying the location for the park and how it would be funded, how it would be acquired. Typically, parks are public realm facilities. We don't want to designate somebody's property for a taking. That's why I've seen our, our land use maps right now. We'll probably put a dot or a star or what have you that will show a general area of need and policies that would support developing that kind of facility in the future.
What I was asking for initially.
Yes, that will be in there.
Okay, all right.
And that ends Chapter 8, as far as the initial presentation. Give us all a gap in case. Chapter 9. Chapter 9, again, looks at a wide range of ideas that have been collected, and these are not just one-off kind of informations, but these are ideas that had been generated at a number of public events through our technical advisory committee, through the different area advisory committees and technical groups that were involved in doing the overall project. And so the list that will be. I got a little ahead of myself, didn't I? How'd I go backwards? How did I go backwards? All right. Well, I was trying to present four or five slides ahead of myself, just to speed it up. What we do want to talk about in Chapter nine is there's a number of recommendations as far as what we need to do overall. Part of this is looking at streamlining the general plan. Does the general plan need to be as large as it is? And some of this comes down to reducing policies that are redundant in nature. Some of it comes down to removing policies that tell us to follow the law. There's quite a few policies. Here's an example in the PowerPoint and in your document that shows a look at, in this case, biological resource protections. There is a goal in the general plan, which is more specific than what is listed in some of the other locations. In this case, we have a number of items from area plans. In fact, area plans are often where this redundancy is found, where they are providing broad policy guidance, redundant to what's done for the county. Now, the interesting thing as you look through here is it does provide a look at redundancy and what might happen over time, when you, you know, why don't you have redundant policies? Well, over time, as you can see probably here, as they've gone through different local community groups as far as editing their own area plans, they've tweaked some things. That's why policies that probably originally started out fairly similar to each other now have slightly different versions. They also cover broad issues. In this case, the protection of endangered species. It probably isn't that much different in one community over a next versus the whole county. The idea is you want to provide certain levels of protection for the environment, and those are county-wide concepts, and do they need to be repeated inside of this document? The next set shows some items that tell us that we should follow the law. You're going to follow Title 24 as far as doing X and Y. You're going to follow ADA requirements. Now, this is all fine in a broad sense, but some of the question is why just these? If you're going to repeat things, is that Title 24 more important than the other federal regulations that are there? Why are we repeating the ones that we do repeat? Yeah, we're going to be developing a whole set of new policies for this general plan update. Do we repeat some of those in different places? The whole issue with redundancy long-term is it causes additional costs for staff. As they write up staff reports, they're now looking at multiple versions of the same policy to provide direction. Over time, some of these have changed a little bit, as I showed with that biological resource policy. What do you do when the Ojai area plan's biological policy is slightly less restrictive than the county's overall policy? Who rules? Well, the general plan should, but what happens if it's the other way around? There could be a local issue that you want to be more restrictive on. In that case, if you have a policy where locally you need to be more restrictive, that's fine. That's not a redundant policy. You're doing something to change a local circumstance that's of local importance. But if you're going to cover the same thing in the same way, it doesn't need to be repeated both places. Because in the end of the day, when somebody comes forward, they have to be found to be consistent with the general plan. The area plan has to be found to be consistent with the general plan. If it's written in the ones, it's basically covered. As we go forward, we've told, maybe cross-cutting isn't a respectful term for this, and perhaps it's more of an integration. But there are a number of topic areas that are integrated across a number of elements. Now, we have taken some components out to make them optional elements, such as agriculture and water are both not required by the state as elements, but we do have elements here in the county because they're of specific concern. Now, that's not to say that the ones up here are not of specific and local concern, but some of them are very important in that they are very integrated with the rest of the document. When you look at things like community health, it has, you can picture all the different elements of the general plan and things that might affect community health. When you talk about climate action planning or climate protections, we use that as an example. There are, for instance, a lot of policies that deal with transportation. You know, do you move all those policies into one piece on climate? Or do you leave them with transportation so they have the same context as the rest of the county policies on transportation? When you deal with wildfires, which is typically in the safety element, and you have issues as far as equipment, manpower, location of stations, et cetera, there is the aspect of wildfires about what the change in climate may do as far as increasing the intensity and opportunity for those wildfires and where they may exist. But they also exist in the realm of other things of how do you treat those things? What are the facilities that are necessary to respond to them? So, we have these items in here that are looked at as far as being integrated items moving forward. And we're going to talk about climate action planning in a little more detail here. One thing we want to talk about is there is going to be the ability with this general plan to have an electronic capability. This is a copy of the Hayward general plan, which we completed a couple of years ago, which has a online general plan document. So, if you wanted to find policies related to wildfires, you can type in a keyword and find every policy that deals with wildfires. And that's not because it has the word wildfire in it, which is something you could do today with a PDF, but it's because that policy has been tagged to have something to do with wildfires. So, when you go online, you can find these very easily. So, as an example, that program, how you can go in to look at the implementation programs and what your implementation guidelines are and when they need to be completed. Also looking at, here's an example of a given implementation, and it talks about all the different policies that that implementation helps to implement. So, the, we still are going to have a definite paper copy, but the electronic version will also allow us to have better access to our information and also take care of not needing some of the redundancies since they'll be easily collected together. Now, climate action planning is something that's an important topic for the county going forward, is a new topic area to be added to the general plan update.
Could, could you go back a couple of slides? I apologize. You were talking about the cross topics. You buzzed through it really quick.
Yes.
One more?
One more.
Oh, there you go. So, those are the ones that we're looking, that crosscut all the other policies, so agriculture, water resources, housing, and so forth. Because like if I look at water, water crosscuts a lot of the different items as well. So, I'm just trying to make sure.
One thing, because, because every piece of a general plan is probably related to itself in some way or another, we could probably have one giant element. That'd be pretty good. We break it into pieces so that we make it more accessible for what we need to pay attention to.
Okay. I just know that if anyone is paying attention to the general plan process, that they might ask that question of why, like for example, water or something. So, I appreciate the clarity on it.
And the big, while they all have integrated components to it, I know it's been a question about the climate action plan. And environmental protections, especially on the climate action plan, are extremely broad brush as far as all the different things it touches. So, integrating that in a broad sense is one thing that was in our scope and something that we're recommending we move forward with. And a couple of slides here, we're going to talk about the difference between a standalone and whether you have a separate element and how all that might work. But one of the key components is just how many things it touches. And if we were to poll everything about a climate action plan in one element, it would be a little different. But let me talk about that as we go forward.
Thank you.
So, as far as what the state says, the state basically leaves it to the local jurisdiction. You can have an integrated climate action plan, or you can have a standalone climate action plan. A big component of this as far as decision-making is often the fact that most cities and counties that are doing a climate action plan are not doing a general plan update at the same time. You have the advantage to actually integrate this together. Some advantages of doing this, it allows us to use a consistent baseline, allows us to use the current environmental document that we're preparing. It also makes it part of the general plan. And there is a long litany of litigation and court cases on the general plan. There's requirements for consistency with the general plan. We feel that this integrated approach provides a stronger implementation of a climate action plan than doing one as a standalone component, which could be more voluntary to complete. So, by having it in your general plan, you now have to make findings that you are consistent with the guidance provided in these climate action plan components.
I know that you're seeing what other communities do towards this. It is a new field, as it were. And I know we had a discussion at SCAG that pointed out that relatively few communities actually even have climate action goals, 40%. And I believe of those, only about 14% actually monitor their greenhouse gas emissions. So, it is a new and upcoming field, but it is something that is very critical, and that's why you don't find that many communities are doing it. They're probably doing it once they, you know, change their general plan or update their general plan. So, I wouldn't say they're not doing it, so we don't need to do it, but looking at it more like, you know, what we need to do is really, and I think whatever we can do to really focus on the climate action plan that we have adopted so that it gets implemented.
Yes, and I, we were feeling that the integrated approach provides a better connection to the rest of the pieces of the general plan, as well as providing that assurity of putting it in and getting it done because of the fact you have to be consistent with the general plan.
And I guess I see it in one way, like the way that you're proposing, we'll look to see, are we in compliance with what we want? But if we separate it out and put it out as its own element, it will say, this is what we want, these are our goals, and I think it will get probably more, more visionary in terms of where we want to go than having it be, have we complied with our goals.
Well, let me be a little more clear about what we see this being. And we collect to, and there have been comments about why isn't this a separate element? It could be. If you'd like to give that direction, we can make that happen. Our only concern is the fact, again, that because it touches so many different parts of the general plan, the question about where you stop becomes important. And then you start to go, well, our mobility element is less effective now because part of our circulation is inside of this climate piece. What we're proposing to do is, as an integrated piece, is to have this in here, to have each one designated with an icon to show that it's part of the climate action plan, and then to actually have an appendix that polls every policy and every goal that relates to that in one place. So, we actually are looking to do it kind of both ways. Instead of a standalone cap, we'll have an integrated cap, but we'll have an appendix that can be standalone and show you everything that the county is doing as far as climate action protection, so all in one place.
And what would you call that appendix?
It would be basically your climate action plan.
Exactly. It essentially would be your, your climate action plan being implemented in your general plan. So, it's probably not significantly different if you were to have it as a standalone appendix or a standalone element.
It's more the, some people like to see it all together in one spot as far as seeing that it's being protected. And so, this is a way to have it all put in one spot so that you have access to it. The electronic general plan will be a significant help in that, in that you'll be able to search for any tag that associates itself with climate action plan, or if you want to look for specific things on GHG. You'll be able to pull these things out really quickly and print out a report showing every goal and policy dealing with it. So, we, and what we're doing by leaving them tied into the rest of the general plan, we think it has a better integration. By having it in the general plan itself, we think it has a better implementation. By having a separate appendix, we think it makes it accessible. Everybody wants to have a standalone thing and go, here it is. And then by having it online, it allows anybody to search for anything they want and narrow down the pieces till they find what they need to have to make better use.
If I could explore that a little bit more, please. I appreciate you listing the advantages and disadvantages. If we get all the way to your suggested sort of a solution to this desire to have a standalone document, if we create that standalone document, is there some reason why we couldn't then call it an element of the general plan?
Well, then you're creating a significant amount of redundancy because there will be-
Sure.
Seventy-five percent of the policies will probably be somewhere else.
Exactly. And that, that would be what you would call it, and you would say that to be a significant disadvantage.
And we, yeah. Our, our recommendation to you is to try to get rid of as much redundancy as possible.
Would it create a significant amount of extra time if you, to do that?
It would be going down a path that we're not currently heading down. It could have some issues as far as timing, because right now, we're building it towards being integrated. So, this could cause some amount of delay getting it completed.
So, Mike, the reason I'm asking these questions is I'm trying to just make the distinction between whether we call it an element or whether we call it a, whether we call the appendix the plan. And, and I can live with calling the appendix the plan if it is truly a robust plan. In other words, I wouldn't want it to be written up as just, you can go find this on page 27, you can go find this on page 19, you can, you know. But if it's, if it's written up well and it's robust, then people can say, that's our plan, right? And we don't have the disadvantages that you would cite of having a standalone element that would complicate the work that you're doing. And I think staff has, staff has indicated that it may take more time because it'd be more coordination that would have to be involved, and you certainly have identified that it'd take more work. So, in my mind, on this, this particular issue where we have a lot of, of public interest in this, my question is, can, if we do the integrated approach that you have, and then if we create the index, right, can we take some time to, after the fact, turn that index into the plan rather than, you know, rather than having it be repetitive when you say, if we create a separate element at the same time, right?
It wouldn't actually be, it wouldn't be an index. It would actually be a copy of those policies. So, it just, it's a tool for reference. The actual policies would still be in the main document.
So, I guess it would be important that it would be robust enough that it would, that it would read that way, and I hope, that's, that's what I hope this board will end up supporting when we give direction to staff, and I hope staff understands that. I just want to turn to staff. Does it make sense to you? Do you feel like you could handle that and turn it into more than an index, but an actual narrative that somebody could say, this is the county's, you know?
Integrate the climate action plan.
Yeah. This, this, yeah, this is the county's climate action plan as it, as it has been integrated into the general plan. Then you get the best of both worlds here.
Right. So, I think I, I understand Supervisor Bennett, what, what you're looking for, and that is our hope for all of the goals and policies and programs, to be forward-facing to the public, to show all of the programs and how each of them are being implemented. And so, it is our goal when we create this system that if you want to look at all of the water policies, you know, and you want to see how the county is doing on all of the water policies, all of the climate action, all of the healthy communities, that we're going to create them all very robustly and all very forward-facing so that the board, all of the public agencies that are responsible, and the public can see how we're doing.
I can appreciate you'll do that, you know, because you can electronically search and do that. But for, particularly for climate change, will we, will staff go through and pull those together and then take the, the extra effort, which I don't think would be substantial, to turn it into some kind of narrative that reads reasonably well as a climate action plan? If somebody says, I just want to, I want to read your climate action plan, we, it seems like we could do that.
I do believe that we could do that. We'll get all the way to the end of it and have something that clearly shows all of our policies that are dealing with it, in, in a format that you can read electronically and that you can print out.
Thank you very much.
Well, can I just clarify? Isn't that the same with health and all policies? Like our, we have that already?
Right. So, so as I was saying, I believe that that concept is going to work for all of our policies. When you have a web-based program that you can sort, and, and like, like Rick said, it's not going to be sorted by the word, it's going to be resorted by, you know, the, the symbolisms that we put to it that's saying, if you're looking for what the county is doing to implement our healthy communities policies, here you go. We're going to have it all together.
It's like a link.
Thank you.
It would be a link to whatever.
It will be more than a link. It will actually be, you know, the policies that you can all see all together and where we're at with each one of them.
Go for the link, and then you can go in and pick whatever you're looking at.
That's the system we're going to build.
That makes sense.
Regardless of the form, it is intended to be a completely detailed and comprehensive climate action plan, all of its components.
I'm, I'm content to have an integrated climate action plan. There are advantages to doing that. To have a, a separate plan outside the general plan has some disadvantages. Having it in the general plan makes it stronger because implementing general plan goals and policies has more weight than in, than a plan that sets off to the side. I would agree with Supervisor Bennett that it's important to, however it's done, to, to be able to summarize everything that's in that plan, all the policies, all the procedures, all the adaptation required and resilience required for climate change in one place. And I'm an old analog guy. I like, I like to hold a, a piece of paper in my hand, and I would like to point to people, I know there's a lot of concern about it, and say, yeah, you can, we can hand you our integrated climate action plan, and you can see what's in it. So, we can do that?
In addition to just the policies, that actually, if you're having it in element, you're also going to be talking about, what are your goals, your climate change action goals, and so that they would be in there. And then if something comes up in the future- And then if something comes up in the future, we'll say, hey, that belongs in the general plan under, you know, this section. So it, to me, it does give it more weight and also more ability to do implementation, tying it in.
Yeah, an index is not going to cut it because, you know, I, you can't go online and go through an index and be satisfied that you're looking at a comprehensive climate action plan, we need it to be summarized in one place that can be downloaded and printed, and you can hold in your hand. We can do that?
Yes, sir. All right. We'll get your final direction after you've had public input on this topic. Now, the next set, we never did find a great way to go through this. There's a lot of bullets on the next 15 slides. My hope was not to read all of them to you, maybe that's your hope as well, but they were included in your staff report, in the copy of the PowerPoint you have in front of you. What we do want to do today is talk about, these are slides that outline some topics that we intend to explore. They don't have the answers to the different topics, they're simply a look at, these are the things we think need to be added into the general plan. Now, as you look at this, what we'd like you to do, and you could highlight some now as we go through the list, or wait till after you've had public input on this topic, whichever the chair would like, but to go through these items and for you to tell us if there's any of these you do not want us to tackle, so that we don't waste time in developing materials on that. If there's some of these that you feel need to have some further guidance as far as the limits that you'd like us to look into, that would certainly be something we'd like to know. If there's something missing from the list, obviously, you could throw that on there too. Now, I, when I say the, missing from the list, this is 15 slides worth, but we've heard hundreds of things from the public and the community. In fact, we talked earlier about getting a letter from Naval Base Ventura County about the joint land use study. That's, there's a number of things that are kind of like in there already, and I can just say for the record, we fully, as the author of the joint land use study, I fully intend to incorporate it into the plan. But, and it's talked about, we will address military compatibility, so that is all going to be in there, as well as other plans and programs for Cal State University, for U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the U.S. Forest Service, there's all sorts of things we have to make, incorporate it into our plan. So this list is not exhaustive, but we think it's the things that came up the most often in getting input from those involved in the last two years of this general plan update. So what I'd like to do is flip through these, and I'll take a moment of silence while I flip through, and if you'd like me to try to explain these, myself or staff can weigh in a little bit on this, but, and if the chair would like me to read them all for the record, I could do that as well.
I think we can read them.
So you're not going to just take them and add them all to the general plan, like, I've been
For these items, we would develop policy options for it, and then you can tell us if you like that option or not.
So, like, I've gone to several of the meetings where the public had to say, and I didn't hear any public in my district saying, you need to increase the maximum residential building heights, you need to allow higher density development on residential park, you know, so you may have one person in one area that recommended this, where you may have 700 in another area say, this is not at all where we're going. So I don't know how you can take this, you know, one person's comment and decide, you know, we need to do a whole policy and come back and review.
Hi, Supervisor Parks. One of the things is, to, to clarify, these are just items to explore, they're not for, necessarily for policy development, but they are things we heard, because we did hear different things at different community workshops, but we've just put them up as, as something to consider, to explore, and potentially consider. We're not going to develop policies and goals for all of these, but what we are going to do is just have that lens as we look at those and look at what maybe other jurisdictions are doing that are similar. Again, we, we tried to vet, you know, what we, we heard most consistently from different areas, and, and that's why we put them up for redaction, just as well as consideration.
And, and so like, some of those things I read, it really depends on where you are in the county, you know, in El Rio, they may want to have higher building heights or higher density. Don't want it in Casa Cano or Ventu Park or Oak Park, you know, so to, to go off on something that would work only in one area, to me, that's more like a zoning question that you would deal with, not an overall general plan for the entire county, having these policies relate to the whole, whole county.
And some of these are bullets that have carried over from that Assets Issues and Opportunities Report that was done a year ago or so. I think on the two bullets you were talking about Supervisor, we've already settled that pretty much, because we have a population number that we've agreed to, we have a way we're going forward with land use designations. So I think we've already answered those two as far as what we're looking to do. So I don't think we're looking to go further as far as increasing density on what has already been agreed on by, with the board as far as direction.
Okay.
And I think on this one, that's kind of the context of it. This isn't a one-off where one person said it, but I think the context of it, and, and some of this was before my time, but was usually about, we don't want to grow our boundaries. If we need to increase our density a little bit to keep our footprint the same, that's the kind of thing to be in a public forum. But again, we've already solved that, as far as where we're going right now.
Can I ask just one question on this last bullet here? When we're talking about streamlining existing challenges, some challenges we have for bathrooms and agriculture, and they're right on that city line, and they could hook up. Are, are those challenges that we're talking about with, with trying to help with this? Is that included in this? Because we do have farm worker housing, and we're trying to do bathrooms, and we're --
Right. So Supervisor Long, this is, this is the issue probably of coordinating with LAFCO early and often, right, to see where the LAFCO issues arise, to make sure that we address things in our environmental documents that then LAFCO can use. The issue of the sewer, unless the board really asked us to explore that issue, and I understand that it is, you have to, it, hook up to sewer, but yet you're in another jurisdiction, so then you have to be annexed into the city, that is problematic, but that is also part of the guidelines for early development. And, and so unless the board really asks us to, to look into the guidelines for early development, that's kind of where that policy lies. Okay?
Mayor Chair, I mean, I think the last bullet point is, I, I'm a member of LAFCO with Supervisor Parks, but I think the LAFCO part of it's extremely important, because we at LAFCO have had a lot of concerns from cities and other special districts that really do not understand LAFCO processes. And, and I think it's important that we really work with LAFCO on that, because many, many times, you know, I know the LAFCO CEO, many times is accused of not working with the cities, but really following LAFCO laws, but I think that's a really important bullet point there, that we work with LAFCO. And in fact, my, what's, my recommendation is that a lot of the cities should take LAFCO 101 to understand what's happening there.
I think it's always working with the cities.
Woof.
And it's, and it's Mr.
I think just a county, a lot of cities, you know, they have a lot of concerns with, and I know Supervisor Parks is our chair then, and we hear that all the time about the concerns the cities have about, but that's a very important, Rick.
I'd like to offer, offer an input here. As I reviewed this list, and I have things that, that I think about this list, but I'm going to wait until I hear the public comment and stuff also, but I just want to use this as an example. There are a lot of things on this list that are really, they're good things. I mean, almost everything, I know you can't say, hey, that's, but I, I really question whether there are things that should be in the land use plan for the unincorporated area of Ventura County, or should they be policies of Ventura County government? They're completely different. You know, just because it's a good policy, there's all kinds of good policies, but should they be policies that should be in the land use plan? And they could be things that could take us down a, a million different rabbit holes, you know, depending on the options that staff developed, et cetera. So in the interest of efficiency, et cetera, I would only want to keep the ones that really have relevance to the land use plans for Ventura County, you know, in the unincorporated area, because this isn't, you know, this is the time for the wish list for everything we'd like to have happen in Ventura County. There is, every one of those things is a legitimate topic for us at our Board of Supervisors hearings, for us to say, hey, we want this to be a policy. So I'm going to, you know, so coordinating with cities with LAFCO to reduce streamlining existing challenges, very good goal, but is it a general plan?
But it has to do with
Land use item?
It has to do with annexations more than anything.
Yeah. Is that, is that something that the unincorporated county, I mean, so I would offer, it's, we just have to be careful, we could have a mission creep of enormous proportions if you looked at all of this list.
What I was talking about
Not that staff would necessarily do that, but it, it concerned me. So staff is saying, where do you think it's not appropriate? I have a number of things that I think are not appropriate on the list, and I would hope staff would welcome, hey, thanks, if that's the majority view of the board, we won't waste our time on that.
I was just talking about
We won't spend our precious time on those, we'll do
I was just talking about annexation from unincorporated to cities.
Sure.
Legitimately, right. That was the, okay.
This is the type of conversation, Mr. Chair, that we're looking for, is just to get your ands, and buts, if you will. And some of them are not, you know, really clear about what we would do about it. The, the fourth bullet here says consider mixed land use, mixed-use land use. Basically, the land use designations we proposed in Chapter 8 now include a mixed-use designation, so that's pretty far as much as we need to do in the general plan, is provide the capability. The area plan themselves, and the communities on their community maps can now decide where to do that mixed use and how it relates to their community. Saticoy and Pyri have already done that. And so, you know, from the general plan standpoint, we don't have to provide a whole lot of policy to get the ball rolling. Circulation, transportation, and mobility element. Only one I'll highlight in here, as we, we have talked before, we will be developing a vehicle miles traveled parameter that will be used for your compliance with state law, and the change to that as far as your SEQA analysis in the future, as of July 1st, 2020 right now. So you'll get the plan done, and you'll be ready to go on day one. That is something that we'll be moving forward, as well as looking at maintaining an LOS parameter for judging the physical implications of projects.
The promote and expand transportation options, you're working with the transit districts, and is that part of the, that we need to work with the general plan for circulation, for housing, and so forth? I think that's extremely important that we
Yeah. Part of this is tied in with the complete streets applications we'll be adding, as far as looking at the holistic picture of transportation, not just moving vehicles and trucks, but how do we do transit? How do we make sure we take care of our disadvantaged communities? How do we take care of the elderly, et cetera?
Very important, okay.
So how do you, you know, I'm, having done a few general plans in my time, and for example, in my city, the general plan is a map that shows the roads, right? And these roads will be three-lane, four-lane, you know, that, that's what it is. So in your general plan, circulation element, it's just talking about the width of roads, essentially. So are you, is this a proposal to have a whole discussion on transit and other types, and alternative transportation modes, and bicycles, and scooters, and
Work with VCTC.
In the general plan?
We will be covering all those things as far as the general plan. Some of them you have less control over, for instance, transit, the county isn't the direct transit provider, you have a transit district that does that. So how do you work with that transit district?
There are actually 10 different transit providers, and the county is one of those 10, but are you suggesting you're going to have a section of the general plan that's going to talk about transportation, and so we're going to throw in all this other information, something we've never had before, I would think?
As far as meeting the requirements of the state and the, the needs locally, you know, so we'll be looking at trails, bikeways, pedestrian access, public safety as far as on the roadways for all those different individuals.
That's a state requirement.
Yeah. Looking at disadvantaged communities, looking at senior citizens, all that stuff has to be covered as part of our circulation element now.
And, and it, they would then be just policies, they're not going to affect land use necessarily? I just, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my, like what Supervisor Bennett was saying, how does this relate to the general plan, which we see mostly as a kind of a land use designations and
So in some communities, it's going to be looking at the provision of safe sidewalks or ADA accessibility in places where sidewalks don't exist, or sidewalk paths are not completed. So we, we provide some policy guidance for that. Obviously, the funding is the next step beyond that for implementation, but we're also not looking to create a, a transit hub and putting lots of apartments around some sort of a light rail system in the future. You know, you're not a, you're not an urbanized city, you're an unincorporated county, as we're planning for. We need to provide transportation that best suits the localities. Truck routing is part of the element overall, safe crossings, railroads, under transportation has even covered things like broadband communications, because it's the movement of information. The movement of goods is also covered in a transportation element, so it covers a wide swath of topics.
Okay.
Probably nothing too shocking on there.
Can, can I share something?
Yeah, about the parks.
Number one, you know, the high-speed internet, you know, over nylon acres, there's absolutely, you know, no service there for internet. And, and then how do we address that? Is that part of the future planning for, for, for that area? Because it really, basically, there's, there's a lot of kids that don't have internet service for homework, and et cetera, and et cetera, so. How do we, how do we incorporate that into the, is that part of the public facilities, services for infrastructure elements for the future, is that?
Provides some broad guidance as to what you're trying to achieve, and then also it gives you some ability to talk to providers as they look for their licensing and fee structures they're doing within the local communities, as far as how that's provided in the future. But the county is not a provider of fiber optic service, and so we're not going to give you a policy to go install fiber somewhere, but some tools for how you might be able to encourage that installation would be something appropriate for the general plan.
Good, okay.
Hazards and safety element. Hazard and safety cover a, cover a broad range of topics, besides the ones we may normally associate as far as sheriff or fire response, how we deal with wildfires, how we deal with earthquakes, tsunami impacts, how we deal with sea level rise, other things that could be part of a safety element. Now, many of these, as we've been talking today, overlap with climate action components as far as a cause and effect kind of piece. And so by having the integrated plan, we hope to be able to address some of these. As I mentioned wildfire earlier, this section would also talk about the facilities that are available to, to fight fires, how you work with CAL FIRE, how you take advantage of the facilities you do have. Climate action component of this talks about the reasons why the world is changing, it talks about the implications of that change, and how we have higher days of excessive heat, how you may have higher fuel loads because of the heavier rains in certain seasons and the dryout in other seasons. So these are where the climate action ties into things that are normal safety components, and take it to another level as far as climate protections. Water element, one of the optional elements that the board had directed that we add to the document. And there's quite a few little topics that have been thrown in here, as far as looking at groundwater, surface water, reclamation of waters, protection of well zones, all these types of things are covered in a water element.
Can I ask a question? On the second bullet, it says excluding state water pursuant to board supervision. So we're exploring additional sources of water, but we're still supporting state water to our cities, right? Because this, when you say exclude state water, sounds like we're not supporting getting like water to the city of Ventura, or Callejas, and so forth. And we have a lot of cities that are dependent on state water, and it goes through county land. So I'm quite confused on that one. Because I, I would think we would be working with our cities based on what we've been talking about, and making sure that everyone gets the water that they need.
Imagine, the, the direction from the April meeting was that we weren't going to bring state water into unincorporated areas as far as a growth inducement, but as you mentioned, there are cities that depend upon that water source and
Right. And I did not say any growth inducement in my statement.
No, no.
I stated to make sure that we're conveying water to where it needs to go.
Yeah, I was just trying to give a little background.
Yeah, 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 I just want to make sure no one is thinking something else. I'm just making sure, because like, a pipe to get in to the, the city of Ventura is like five to 10 years to get it done, and there's, it's in county land and so forth. What are we doing to be good stewards to ensure that those cities get the water they need?
So you want to make sure that whatever we write
Yeah.
Allows the cities to have the right to bring in that water if they desire.
Yes, please. Please, please, please.
Housing element. Housing element, these are a couple items that have been brought up. Again, we're not getting into housing policy at this point. That'll be left for the next housing element round. But these are some points that have been brought up, and we'll see if these have cross-purpose in other elements. We will address some of those other elements to be prepared.
Just to follow up on that last slide?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go forward, I just read this thing about the baby boom and senior housing needs. Is that called out as well? The different types of housing that perhaps seniors would want to downsize, be in facilities that have care involved?
Yeah, as far as the ultimate housing element, not as part of this upgrade, but as far as the 21 housing element, that will be something that will have to be looked at as far as the types of housing and their distribution within the county. Housing requirements are changing across the state as far as what's being desired now, both on the older populations as well as the younger.
Can I...
Commissioner Dukas, that's, I also want to bring to your attention that that is a current program in our current housing element that we're working on right now.
Okay, and can I just confirm that it's affordable housing, it's senior housing, it's the farmworker housing? All those will be included?
Yeah, we're working continuously on all of them, but we do have a special program that the board has asked us to work on in this housing cycle, dealing specifically with senior housing as well.
Agricultural element, there's actually three slides on here. Two slides were recommendations that came out of the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee, and one slide that was from input provided in the broader public.
Just a comment on the first one. I think that we all agree that both agriculture lands, wildlife quarters have value. And the idea, I think, should actually be not to make sure that wildlife quarters don't conflict with agriculture uses, but rather how you can have, they can coexist and work with each other.
Thank you.
That's what, that needs to be a goal.
Okay. Any other comments on this one at this time? Second set of inputs from AIPAC. And finally, on agriculture, these are the other items that have been brought up by public or staff as part of the development of issues earlier. Yes?
Processing. It is on, thank you. Not the tech guy. Increase opportunities for agriculture processing, pre-processing in packages. So is that bagging and juices, are those included in that? I just can wonder.
In a broad sense, they could. These were just the broad comments that had come in, so that could, any kind of post-processing from actual field processing, washing, re-bagging, to secondary processing such as the roasting of almonds.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just also say the last two bullet points were decided in the last election. Right? We, it was agreed to allow for a certain amount of packing facilities, processing facilities, and also to protect ag land even next to existing schools.
Supervisor Parks, I just wanted to add a comment in the staff report. We do have a caveat on that pre-processing of packing facilities, that those are addressed in the non-custodial zoning ordinance specifically. So, but that bullet didn't make it to that slide, just wanted to point that out.
And last on agriculture. Economic vitality element, this is also a new optional element that was added by the board in the early parts of the Alternatives Report. And these are some of the key topic areas that have been brought up in the past.
And I would think that there are, just like you were suggesting with the climate action element, if we have one, this would be the same type of situation. Throughout the general plan, there are different policies in the different areas that will promote economic vitality, that you could, you know, if you wanted to, put it together in an appendix. But I think that's the same kind of example that we are having with Climate Action Plan. You had put other suggestions out there, like, you know, broadband and things. What about things like solar power sites? We've been, sometimes the county gets requests, you know, we have funds if we can find some areas to put solar arrays. So that might be something to include, as well as even wind power or battery storage. We're getting requests for that now in terms of permitting. So those are the kinds of things that I think would also promote goals of the general plan, but something that would be land use specific, which I kind of see where that's, where you want to go with your general plan.
This being portrayed as an individual element was per the earlier direction from the board. It certainly could be made one of those integrated items if the board so desires, and with the commission's recommendation. All right, I think we're at the end of our presentation. We're looking to get some...
I was going to ask one more question. Excuse me, Mr. Chair, one more question. The ADUs, are they going to be counted towards the arena numbers? The ADUs?
If it can be shown to meet affordability, yes. In fact, ADUs are being used by many locations for meeting affordable housing needs.
Not 100%? A portion, okay. I just, I had this question, I missed it, I was going to ask you. Okay, thank you.
Another question is the economic vitality element. So that's the strategic plan that we currently have, that is being rolled out into all the different items. That's what we're talking about here.
Supervisor Long, it would utilize information from the strategic plan, but it's going to build upon our draft backroom report, the economics section, also the OPR's general plan guidelines for economic development. So the strategic plan would be one of the sources from which we could pull from to integrate information to support business or economic development.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I mentioned, as we wrap up here, we are showing that we're still on schedule for meeting that, the first half of 2020 for the completion. These are some schedules to getting us through a draft document, which will get us in position to prepare the draft environmental impact report. And then the remainder of the time is actually for the public review of that, response and comments to it, and then consideration by the Planning Commission and their recommendation to the board for ultimate approval of the general plan update and the certification of the environmental impact report for the general plan update. With that, we'll hold for recommendations at your desire after the public input.
Okay, great.
Let me answer.
Okay. Do we have any staff presentation, any questions, planning commissioners? We're good? Nothing from the board? All right, then we're going to go open to the public. We're going to go three minutes for each card? Well, maybe I'm going to go two minutes for each card. Two minutes, let's do two. Okay, Amanda Fagan, please, and then Vicki Paul on deck. And if anybody, you know, hears something that's already been said, that'd be great. You could, oh, yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chairman Foy, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Powers, Commissioner Rodriguez, and members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Amanda Fagan, and I'm the Community Planning Liaison Officer for Naval Base Ventura County. Naval Base Ventura County has an annual economic impact to Ventura County of more than $2 billion and supports over 20,000 direct, indirect, and induced jobs, over 18,000 of which are held by Ventura County residents. As I have testified to this board and commission, most recently at the July workshop, the general plan update presents an important opportunity to implement the strategies of the Naval Base Ventura County Joint Land Use Study, or JLS, and recommendations of the Air Installations Compatible Use Zone, or ACU, study to incorporate key military compatibility components. We appreciate the reference to military land use compatibility and impacts to military readiness on page 9-8 of the Alternatives Report. We look forward to an expanded discussion and consideration of the 13 joint land use study strategies that reference an update to the general plan and associated ACU's recommendations, perhaps as a cross-cutting policy topic. Several areas within the Alternatives Report seem ripe to incorporate JLS strategies and ACU's recommendations, such as the noise section on page 9-15. For example, JLS Strategy LU8A suggests that jurisdictions incorporate ACU's compatibility criteria within the general plan and zoning ordinance, and Strategies NV1A and NV1B suggest updates to the general plan for noise attenuation standards to address aircraft noise from overflight. Many other local governments in California incorporate military compatibility policies into their general plans, including the city of Oxnard's standalone general plan land use element, as well as Los Angeles County's variety of compatibility policies. So with that, I thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Amanda. Vicki Paul, then Kitty Merrill.
Supervisor Foy?
Yes.
I'd just like to point out, just like to get into the discussion. I will be requesting military compatibility to be...
Yes.
Thanks for that study, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much for letting us address you this afternoon. I thank you for your diligence in dealing with the complexities of this problem with your help of, with the help of your able staff. And as you morph the Climate Action Plan and the general plan, I am encouraged that you are using very capable choices as you deal with that. Two zip codes in the county are facing sea level rise, and it will not be abundantly obvious in the evening news. It'll just sneak in. Your new Chapter Eight on the climate issue is difficult for the public to follow the labels, and I hope that as you repair the verbiage, you can label that so that we can follow more directly. It will involve coastline and ports, air quality, transportation, public access, health care, and the changes we will all face in getting around and what we eat. The international or intergovernmental panel on climate change is by necessity very conservative, and there are those that think that 1.5 degrees Celsius as a goal is too lenient. I'm going to prefer to see it as zero. Whichever goal is used, it will impact fossil fuel emissions and air quality and health, real estate survivorship, and the costs that we must bear for crisis with fires, drought, and flood. There's no statistic available for what portion of our climate change is human-caused, but we know that the damages are partly due to irresponsibility from us, and the degree to which we can label that will be helpful. The trend is to still face each battle with one effect at a time, and I hope that even though this is not a glamour issue for the news, we can do better in getting attention to it. Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it. Kitty Merrill, and then Chris Collier on deck.
Good afternoon, planners and supervisors. My name's Kitty Merrill, and I'm a resident of South Oxnard. Thank you for the work you are doing on the general plan. It's so crucial that you are taking the attention and detail in climate action planning. You know, the IPCC study came out a couple of weeks ago. It's not in the headlines anymore, but the things that it reported on are going to be coming to us. And it's so urgent that a climate action plan be part of the general plan and just optically having it as an element, having it as something that can be looked at as a whole is going to be really important for the community to be able to see what's happening, to buy into it, and to just show that Ventura County is moving forward in the ways that it needs to, to keep the county livable for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris Collier, and then Trevor Zierhut. Is that how you do it? How is Zierhut, how do you say?
Zierhut.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and members of the board and planning commissioners, and happy Election Day, right? Great day. I'm here today representing my client, the Western States Petroleum Association. Bob Poole submitted a letter, I believe, this morning, the email. I brought some hard copies in case that hadn't got to you guys yet. But just a few quick comments. As producers in the oil and gas industry, we agree that it's important to develop policies that ensure oil and gas are developed in a safe and responsible manner. We believe that a public policy goal for the county should be to supply affordable, ample, and secure domestic-produced energy under our state's stringent environmental safety standards to improve the well-being and access for opportunity for Ventura County residents. And what we want to talk about is something you've heard me say before. In California, we produce, including Ventura, we consume 2 million barrels a day of crude oil. We consume everything we use, which is only about 37%, and we must import over 1 million barrels of this critical and primary energy source. A lot of it comes from the Middle East, where there are significant differences in human rights and environmental legislation. So while we applaud and committed to being an active partner to help us reduce climate pollution, we have to take a global view. It's a long boat ride from the Middle East to ship crude oil that we're going to use in California. We need to ensure that we can produce here locally, as opposed to increased foreign imports. We may not share the same views on all things, but what we do share is the same future. The best way to ensure that future is to seek answers and questions by having civil science-based discussions about the facts. And the fact is, is we import a lot of oil. And so we want to make sure that in the alternative study, we look at that oil. We requested that in a letter. This second letter today is a follow-up to our first letter and some of the comments that the board has received. So we'd appreciate your reviewing that information as part of the alternative study. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trevor, please, and then Michael.
Chiakos.
Chiakos. Thank you, sir.
Hello, supervisors, planning commissioners. Thank you very much for having us here today and for continuing to go ahead with the general plan process. My name is Trevor Zierhut. I'm here as a Community Partnerships Director for Ventura County Economic Development Association, VICEDA. We've shown up at previous events like this and during comment period, requesting that the economy be considered in all aspects of the general plan, and in particular, the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan be considered. Again, in all aspects. We appreciate that the Economic Vitality element is now, has been added. We think that was a necessary step, and again, we do appreciate that. Going further, we would hope that with the alternatives, and again, throughout the general plan entirely, the economy be considered when considering all different aspects. You can't have, I, we believe, a focus on the transportation, on agriculture, on water, on housing, on land use, without it being seen in the scope of the economy. None of them exist without the economy, without jobs, without an economic base. Really, there's no, there's no use for any of that. So we appreciate, again, that being added, and we hope that you consider that further in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael? And then Allegra? Allegra Roth.
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Chiakos. I'm the Director of Energy and Climate Solutions at the Community Environmental Council. And we are an environmental nonprofit organization founded in 1970. And for the last 50 years almost, we've been pioneering environmental solutions throughout the Central Coast and California. And now we focus entirely on energy, transportation, food, and climate solutions. And we are currently working with Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance on a couple different grants funded by the California Energy Commission, one to develop an electric vehicle blueprint for Ventura County, and the second to develop energy action plans for Ventura and Thousand Oaks, as well as offer free energy audits to local businesses. And we urge the county of Ventura to develop a robust climate action plan or element, as well as environmental justice chapter. We are really glad to hear that the Climate Action Plan is going to be integrated into the general plan and that this appendix will act like a standalone plan. What is the most important, though, is that... What is the most important, though, is that we have very strong targets and robust policies so that we can lead with these climate solutions. California is leading the world in devising solutions to tackle climate change. The state has new and innovative programs in many other sectors, many with significant funding, and this general plan should lay out the policies and mitigation strategies to lead on climate solutions so we can claim this fair share of our funding. We look forward to seeing a dedicated Ventura County climate action plan, and we'll work with the county and community on programs to show this climate leadership. Thank you.
Excuse me. Is your study also including low economic and disadvantaged communities for that?
Yes, we have a special focus on disadvantaged communities, and as you know, there's many grants that are specifically focused for disadvantaged communities, and we want to attract that funding to Ventura County.
When you were talking about developing a blueprint for electric vehicles, were you talking about charging stations?
Yes, charging stations, multifamily, disadvantaged communities, working at the port.
What about autonomous vehicles? Would that be?
There'll be a chapter about autonomous vehicles, and electric autonomous shared the future of transportation.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Roth, and then Kimberly Rivers after that.
Good afternoon, supervisors, commissioners, and staff. My name is Allegra Roth, and I'm also here with the Community Environmental Council that Michael just spoke about. Thank you to you and your staff for exploring the incorporation of soil health and carbon sequestration policies into the plan. CEC has been extensively involved in local efforts to improve our region's agricultural soil health, including the administration of a Healthy Soils grant through the state of California. And after a productive conversation with some of your planning staff, this fall, CEC submitted a letter on November 1st with detailed and specific recommendations for the county to support this effort regionally, including the adoption of certain agricultural practices as voluntary BMPs. So as discussed in this letter, soil health practices can aid the county and its capacity to reach various strategic goals, and they're in line with the guiding principles and policy topics explored today. So the proposed practices build the economic vitality and environmental sustainability of Ventura County's ag sector, that's important to say, and it improves the management of the region's surface and groundwater resources, and additionally reduces the impact of climate change. It's kind of a win-win-win thing there. So certain practices can also assist the county in processing its organic waste, which is a new requirement from the state, as you know. So there are dozens of soil conservation practices through the federal government and the state government, and these practices not only strengthen the soil biology and soil structure, but also build its capacity to store water and drawing down atmospheric carbon, reducing the impact of climate change. So there are a variety of state funding opportunities and initiatives that support these types of practices, including $15 million into the California Healthy Soils program. Our efforts have included conversations with COLAB, the County Farm Bureau, and County Resource Conservation District, and I look forward to building this momentum collaboratively with them. So I hope you consider our recommendations in the letter and look forward to future conversations.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Kimberly, and then Jan Dietrich.
Hello, supervisors, commissioners, and staff. For the record, I'm Kimberly Rivers, Executive Director of SeaFrog, Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas, and we present these comments today through the perspective of real experience in the county about how general plan policy gets distilled down through ordinances to how permits are approved and enforced. The first point is regarding the stakeholder input you've received. The county has spent considerable resources, time, and money to receive that input, to examine it. We really encourage you to direct staff to move ahead, to pull policy examples for the draft general plan that you'll review in the next phase. All that stakeholder input is a really valuable resource. And secondly, about the climate action plan. The county must take reducing our contribution to climate change seriously, and I know you do. It is right that it's going to crosscut and be integrated across the entire plan, but it cannot be an appendix. It cannot be a summary. It cannot be something outside of the general plan. We need the climate action policies to influence ordinances and permitting policies. This isn't about formatting. Supervisor Parks, you're absolutely correct about it being an element, about it being visionary, not just meeting minimum requirements. It needs to be proactive. You were given that mandate in your own general plan survey of the public to be proactive when it comes to climate change. It's got to be an element. During the consultant's presentation earlier today, he said that elements are created to, quote, "break it into pieces so that we pay attention to it." Exactly. There's a water element, a transportation element, a housing element. There needs to be a climate action element. And Supervisor Long, you pointed that out about water. It's cross-cutting. It's very important. Climate action is the same way. It must be a unique element within the general plan document to ensure it is enforceable and effective. Goals for emissions reductions will not be effective within an appendix. It's got to be in the general plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kimberly. Appreciate that. Jan, and then Ron Whitehurst after.
Jan Dietrich, representing Dietrich Institute for Applied Insect Ecology. I'm sharing with you a copy of the book Drawdown that presents 100 solutions in a comprehensive plan to reverse global warming. It also includes a copy of the Sonoma County Regional Climate Action Plan, a summary of that that we consider to be an example of a countywide standalone climate action roadmap, a visionary roadmap, that is like what we would recommend. And also, the submission that I made in October 24th, that this morning I saw was still not published, so I make it available to you in case you haven't seen it. It has 14 policy recommendations at the intersection of water, soil, agriculture, health, food, and natural resources that all are pulled together in carbon sequestration policy. So those of us in the Dietrich Institute are students of ecological systems restoration. Some of us have been closely following the State Air Resources Board, setting goals and targets for carbon sequestration, as Allegra was referring to. The Healthy Soils program is part of that. Our suggestions, as I say, go across, they are cross-cutting. The climate mobilization called for by the IPCC needs for all sectors to be aware of how we can be successful, and the odds are that we will fail if we do not stop polluting the atmosphere and start pulling the existing carbon out of the atmosphere by every means in the next decade. They give us 10 to 12 years to show major, major. They use the word mobilization. Far beyond what the state of California has so far mandated, a standalone climate action plan is a prerequisite statement that says there's a climate problem.
Thank you, Jan.
Solutions then need to be cutting-edge applied science, which my company and my nonprofit have to offer, and so we need a roadmap, like Commissioner White says, a piece of paper we can take a sit-down and talk about how are we going to do it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ron, please, and then Christopher Young.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today. I'm Ron Whitehurst with the 350 Ventura County Climate Hub, and our fair county grew up on oil and citrus. County employees have interpreted their role as taking care of fossil fuel companies and industrial agriculture. Now, we see these industries as driving climate chaos. It is time to turn to local renewable energy and renewable food systems. In a county dominated by oil interests, we learned that the mention of climate will be buried and fragmented. We come to you with two asks. One is that representative stakeholder focus groups in a participatory process as a foundation for community mobilization. A climate element in the general plan to serve as our climate action plan. The plan should lay out goals and programs for a comprehensive, just transition from fossil fuel to a clean energy economy, and investments in natural and working lands for maximum biological carbon sequestration. We call for an interim climate mobilization plan like those adopted by San Francisco, Richmond, and a growing list of cities. With the several-year process of coming up with a climate action plan as part of the climate, the general plan update, we need to act today. And so we need an emergency mobilization plan to rally the community's energies towards that goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Christopher Young, and then Bruce Smith.
It's a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak before you. My name is Christopher Young. I live in the unincorporated portion of Ventura County in the Ojai area. I've maintained a chiropractic practice here in Ventura in the city for 35 years. Stephen Covey once said, "Don't let the urgent overtake the important." It's pretty obvious that our general plan is something urgent in the sense it must be taken care of, it must be worked on. But climate change is the important part that Mr. Covey could be referring to in that extremely valuable statement that he made. I personally think that that's one of the challenges that we, here in Ventura County in the United States and in the world, are facing, is that many of us will be doing a lot of urgent things, and we may forget not just the important, but the critical things that have to do with human survival. So it's obvious to me that we need to keep that very, very clearly in mind, and obviously some of you have spoken to that, and some of the speakers here have spoken to that. I hope to learn more about what is meant by an element. I read one thing that said that elements may have access to being updated more frequently than 20 years. It also is a very interesting thing to me that we could have an element for hazard and safety, and yet, is there a greater hazard, is there a greater need for safety than climate change? And if that's the case, would that not move climate change to the level and need and importance of an element? Or am I missing something? I'm missing time, so thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Bruce Smith, and then Jeffrey Starkweather.
Good afternoon. I'm Bruce Smith, and I'm a citizen of Ventura County. So you have my comments. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I want to highlight that specifically in several of the tables in chapter eight, and I missed this point before, apparently there are no lot coverage standards being retained, and that's really problematical because the existing zoning ordinance has no standards other than to refer to the general plan. The other thing is the area plans, although they may have, only cover the areas dealt with by the area plans. So the vast majority of this county would have no lot coverage standards unless there's an attempt to either retain it in the general plan or have it in the zoning ordinance. But of course, the implications of adding the general plan are much more significant than having in the zoning ordinance. This would have, with no standards, is likely to have, or has certainly the potential to adversely affect residential community character, loss of resources on open space and agricultural designated lands, increased water runoff due to impermeable surfaces, increased ambient temperatures due to loss of vegetation. The other things just to touch on are specifically the desire by staff and the consultants to eliminate redundancy they perceive in the area plans. Well, okay, that's a major problem, and I point out, those were created with the input of local input by those community people. So what appears to be just house cleaning by staff may have significant issues for the local residents of those particular areas. Eliminating programs, understood, but they are a guidepost for the public to understand what it is that we do to protect or achieve the goals of this county. So if you're going to eliminate the programs, make sure that the text clearly outlines these are activities or ordinances of the state that we have to abide by, and hence they, by our implementing those, will be achieving the goals of the county general plan.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate that.
Before you step away, I'd like your take. Climate action plan that's an element or one that's cross-cutting with an index?
My personal opinion is climate action is extremely important. It was not to the degree it is today about the effects it will have, cross-cutting across everything. Its importance is really, really high. If you concur with that, then it should be an element. It shouldn't be just a compendium of references or appendices.
Mr. Smith, do you think that if a statement, a climate action policy, whatever statement we have in there, if it's integrated in some element, does it have any greater force of law if it's in an element versus if it is integrated with some other element? Does it have the same force of law or greater force of law if it's in the element?
Well, you don't even have to have elements in the general plan. The question is, is it a goal? Is it a policy? Is it a program? And those are the real key points of any general plan, irrespective of your format. So as long as it's expressly clear that this is the policy, the minimum standards, formatting is less of a particular issue than...
The important thing is that it's in the general plan.
In a form which is, in fact, implementable. And also understandable to the public.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey, and then Jennifer Sage after.
Jeffrey Starkweather, Miners Oaks. I grew up in Miners Oaks, and I've been in other states. I've been dealing with land use plans for some time. I would say that the state actually sets out the way you should structure these elements, which starts with a goal, then objectives, and the policies are designed to carry those out. So the idea that it's going to be more work to design goals, objectives, plans for each of these elements, and then have them cross-tab in sense with a computer, you can just shoot them across, if you're just making it an index, I can guarantee you the public is completely lost with this thing. Because unless you're a researcher or lawyer like I've been, you're not going to an index to find out what the plan is. It needs to be also educational, and it needs to be aspirational. So if you're following that organizational structure, I think not only should be, I agree with everybody about climate change, I would say one thing about the gentleman representing the petroleum group. It's not your job to solve worldwide petroleum production, but it is your job to decide to protect us from droughts, from fires, from floods, from all the impacts of climate change, and also, we have an obligation, both statutorily and morally, to be reducing our greenhouse gases. That's, to me, our job and your job. Let me add one, a couple of things real quick. I think you should also have healthy communities and equity as elements. Obesity is one of our biggest health problems, and every element of attacking obesity, whether it's food, whether it's exercise, or whether it's land use, I mean, the structure of our cities are all land use issues. So I think that, and it cross-cuts, and this whole idea of cross-cutting, every single element totally should cross-cut each other. As far as going to the objectives and the goals, I think if you're going to have a an... As far as going to the objectives and the goals, I think if you're going to have an accountable and enforceable plan, those goals and objectives need to be actual indicators with numbers, like a percentage. We're going to improve so much, because just saying we're going to go do something without having any numerical objective, how can you hold anybody accountable for that?
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Jennifer, and then Monica Gray.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and Staff Meeting.
Could you bring, could you pull the microphone down a little bit?
Here. I have two cards. Which is the one that you're reading, as far as, the one, the, I have two, two blue cards. Which is the one? Okay, well, then I'll speak on the oil companies then.
Hold on. Before you go, let's start over. We only have one item we're talking on. This is this item, so there can't be...
Okay, okay. This will be on land, the oil land use on my property.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
All I'm saying is that there's no laws in place for the oil companies to ma, I live in the Upper Ojai Valley. There's lots of oil companies and oil wells on my property. There are no laws in place as far as the maintenance and the upkeep, your standards, the county standards of painting their rails. You know, the whole Upper Valley is kind of a mismatch of, it's oil country, but it also looks terrible because of the use of the oil companies and the way they, the way that they handle their oil wells and their trees around it and their shrubs around it. And I really think we need something in place that sets them at a higher standard because they are in and amongst a lot of residential people, and so that it adds to the value of our property, not depreciates our property. And then the other thing I, topic was on the windmills. Being in the Upper Ojai Valley, there are no laws in place, as far as, I'm foresore, but there's no laws in place about the sound decimal that these oil wells reach, I mean, I'm sorry, that these windmills reach. And I have taped a recording of a huge amount of sound environmental impact on the wildlife from these turbines that turn on during the cold season. And there needs to be a law in place that states that they're only allowed to turn them on at a certain temperature, so that it's not impacting everyone in the Upper Ojai Valley by the ricocheting of the, of just these wind turbines going. And also, there, we need to put silencers. Have the agriculture needs to come up with some kind of, just some kind of list or guidelines from you that says, they need to put silencers on these things, just like helicopters have, so that they, they're not in environmental impact.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
I know when they're on the wildlife run, when these things are...
Jennifer.
And we need an environmental impact on this.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Monica Gray, and then Adam Vega.
Ten years doesn't seem like we have a lot of time to make a significant impact. God, I think about the time that we have left, and I would ask you, what would you say to my little Mia if she were in front of you? What kind of plan would you have? You know, what would you tell Mia that you're going to do to stop the environmental impact to our county of oil and gas activities? I had to take a long, hard look at my life, and I realized, God, I've lived within two miles of oil and gas activity for pretty much most of my life. I wonder how I ended up with stage-three breast cancer. I don't know. You know, correlation, causation, blah, blah, blah. All I care about is fixing the problem now. You guys need to work at like the speed of Google, not talk about, you know, how we have to protect the oil and gas industry and how we can hold their hand until they figure out how they're going to transition out of dirty energy into something that will actually benefit everyone. I see that seal sitting behind you guys, and I see what's staring back at us. I have plenty of friends that work in the oil and gas industry, and I feel like a real jerk telling them, guess what? I don't care how you're going to make your living. You got to figure it out, because how you're doing it now is impacting the rest of us. But I do know from studying the county's, you know, plan for economic vitality and how you plan to create clean jobs, you have the brilliant minds in this building right here. I've seen some of them in your economic building workshops. Sorry, chemo-brain's a little, got me a little slow today. But all I'm asking you guys is, you know, fix the problem now. Address the problem now. Don't pretend like it's not happening and, you know, act like all these hippies are in here just wringing their hands about nothing. You guys got it. Time is ticking. We don't have much time. I'm late for work. You guys have a good afternoon.
Thanks, Monica. Adam, and then Deborah Pendry.
Good afternoon, Staff, Board, County CEO. My name is Adam Vega, and I'm a lifelong resident of the community and a community organizer in the beautiful County of Ventura. I'm here today asking, begging, pleading on my hands and knees that the Board and the Commissioners require that we have a robust standalone Climate Action Plan, containing policies that will be enforced and incorporated into the general plan. We must take a proactive approach rather than a reactive approach when addressing the collateral damage that climate chaos will wreak and has already done so. We've experienced this with the Thomas Fire. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change calls for the creation and implementation of a Climate Action Plan. The cities of Oakland, Berkeley, and Richmond have declared a climate emergency and are launching an emergency speed climate mobilization and just transition effort. I believe we need the very same done here. For all the people who can't be here because they're out voting, picking up their kids, at work, et cetera, A through D, all the above, point is, people can't be here, though they want to be here, because it affects them. Many people have ideas and the desire to help the community pull together their resources and do all they can within. As many mentioned before, roughly a decade we have to halt or try to reverse a permanent runaway catastrophe for everyone here on earth. The six extinction is what they're calling it, and we got to stop it, or at least try. So we ask the Supervisor and the Commissioners to work with the community, help lead the emergency mobilization efforts called for. A strong Climate Action Plan coming out of a broad-based and genuine community input is what we need. Places like Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Cincinnati, Ohio, and just recently Marin County have already jumped on board to do so, and there's some great models to review. We can be most effective doing our part as a county, ensuring that participation is accessible to all. And yeah, we'd really love to have your leadership for a strong plan, which we can support through unified action. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Deborah?
Thank you, Deborah Pendry, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. I attended a couple of the county's general plan public workshops back in 2015 as a county resident. Large white sheets of paper were put on the wall with columns addressing transportation, land use, education, tourism, the usual issues. Sustainability was also one of those columns, basically on equal footing with all the other issues. We each got a sheet of dots to put on various columns based on what we thought was the most important. I thought, is this a test? I put all my dots in the sustainability column because without that, without addressing climate change, everything else is a moot point. Of course, the other issues are in some form or another part of the climate change challenge, but they must be addressed through the lens of resiliency regeneration, literally rethinking and restructuring civilization. Our fossil fuel-based paradigm is coming to an end. And as the letter from the law firm of Shute, Mahaly, and Weinberger points out, a Climate Action Plan must be given the importance it requires, and having its analysis and discussion spread throughout various sections and documents. Instead of having them spread out through sections and documents, this indicates to the Coalition, we're still approaching the general plan and the way we conduct ourselves through the lens of an industrial revolution mindset. It's like just layering climate action on top of what already has been. We must step out of that box. We must change the paradigm. Surely, our common goal for 2014, excuse me, 2040 is a habitable environment and a thriving population. Working backwards from that goal, a master climate action element to guide all the other elements is critical. So we're kind of referencing, we're always referencing back to that. It's like the Native American wisdom. How will this action affect seven generations from now? You're always using that reference point and making your decisions from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. That was our final speaker, and did you, did you put a card in there?
Yellow card, but I think he...
Okay. Okay, if anybody's going to put one in, put it in now, real quick.
He did put in a card, but it was yellow.
What's your name, sir?
John Price.
John?
John Price.
Don Price. Okay, Don, you can get up and speak, and we'll just, make sure you fill out a blue one and after, so.
I did fill out one.
Okay. Do we have it?
Put in a yellow card.
Okay. Great, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Foye, members of the Board and Commissions. My name is Don Price. I'm retired from the Air Pollution Control District. My question actually is, my comment is more of a question. I'm not totally opposed to integrating the Climate Action Plan within the general plan. There are some advantages to that, but it seems to me, if I'm not mistaken, the consultant said that 75% of the plan would be integrated, so what happens to the other 25%? Where's that going to go? If it's only referenced in an appendix, will it be legally binding? So perhaps we can get some clarification on that, but it seems to me the best way to address that would be to include a separate element for the Climate Action Plan and then integrate where applicable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on a public comment.
What are you going to ask, a public comment?
So, planning, did you review the Agriculture Policy Advisory Committee's notes they sent in a letter for a policy on the Ag?
Hold on, just a second. Does that have to do with this question? We're going to finish public comments.
Sorry.
We've got some more public comments. Okay.
There are a couple more.
Yeah, there's, I'm sorry.
Oh, apologize. Didn't mean to jump in.
Yes, you did.
Saw that public comment.
Leslie Purcell. It's Leslie, and then Stephen Colme.
Colme.
Colme. Colme. Very good. Thank you, sir. I need this guy sitting next to me all the time. It's perfect.
Hi, Leslie Purcell. Thank you for allowing the public to have input here. I appreciated what Mr. Zaragoza raised, the issue of the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units. I think that, and also a planning commissioner, that we need a lot more creative and affordable possibilities for housing, specifically for seniors and other lower-income folks. So I appreciate that. I would like to see more emphasis on solar, and I believe Supervisor Parks said that we have possible grant funding available for these things. Solar on roofs, county buildings, commercial buildings, parking lots, this should be put forward as one of the elements that we include as part of a Climate Action Plan or part of our land use planning. I also would like to bring up the issue of flaring. And I know we've got a lot of it going on, a lot of it you don't see. It's back up in the hills, and most of it, I think, is in county. There's one big flare that I've seen for months now along the Santa Clara River in the plain there on the other side of the Oxnard side of the Santa Clara. It's a huge flame you can see at night. I think this gas can be used. I know sometimes they say there's issues with needing to be cleaned, but it's a climate effect, too, if you've got it being flared night and day. There's the huge one up La Conchita also that has been going for years and years. So I think that some of these policies could be implemented that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then Stephen.
Hi, I'm Stephen Colme, a resident of Ojai. I was really pretty unconvinced this morning that climate is, in fact, going to receive the kind of attention it requires in this particular plan. Terms like cross-cutting and integrated, or integrating, sound fancy, but they can be another term for dilution. And let me give you two examples of that from your own plan. In Chapter Three, the Alternatives Matrix that's done, it's actually quite a convolution of the similar matrix that's in the OPR Chapter Four. There are a number of categories that should have had greenhouse gas emissions checked in their boxes. They were not. If we looked at OPR's chapter, I think it's on Chapter Four, page 20, greenhouse gas emission reduction and climate adaptation are included in every single required element with the sole exception of noise. We don't see that in the way the matrix was formed for this county Alternatives Plan. Now, if we turn to Chapter Nine, there are many topics that are raised that should, in fact, have been at least touching on the topic of climate. If it was intended that it be cross-cutting, and they were simply omitted. So really, what we need is something that is clear, enforceable with goals and objectives, and that's really accomplished with a, with an element. This stands really with, on equal footing with water, the economic vitality, and agriculture, which were added as elements. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Brendan, that's all I have? Is that all you have? Anybody else? Okay. We're going to close public comments. And then what I'd like to do before I get to Supervisor Longs, I'd like to ask staff if you've got any comments, response to anything, you guys.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I know there's one thing at least I wanted to make clear, and that is, we are not proposing to make a Climate Action Plan as an appendix. What was stated was that we are proposing an integrated Climate Action Plan. It would be integrated into all the elements of the general plan. And for convenience of reference, we would copy and paste every single goal and policy that has to do with climate action planning and put it in appendix. Not an index, not a list of titles, the actual goal, the actual policy. It would be there just because we've had people tell us they want to see it all in one's place, they can put it into context. The Climate Action Plan itself, the policies, would be in the entire general plan and would be integrated with them. Now, as far as the separate element on climate, the separate element on the healthy communities you heard tonight, you know, we could break this thing up into 20 different chapters if that, you know, we're trying to aggregate to a certain extent to make it a more usable document. Can we have a climate element? Certainly. As I mentioned, my only concern is the fact that it is so cross-cutting. The last speaker just mentioned the fact it should have had a dot against every single element there. Because of that, you would be focusing an enormous amount of the plan in that one element, and then all the other elements would be referencing to it. So it's kind of how you want to cut the document. We feel what we're proposing would help with that to some extent. But I want to make sure you understood that we are not proposing an appendix to stand in as the Climate Action Plan. It's simply a ease of access for your readers. The item about lot coverage not being in our table, the table is meant to give a high-level look at land use designations, it's not meant to replicate or give our approach to every policy in the document. How we will actually handle lot coverage, that is something we will look at. We have to go through every policy in the document and come up with what we think is the best fit. Lot coverage, honestly, looking at it, is more of a zoning component typically, and in fact, it goes against zoning designations. It does not go against general plan designations. So it's an odd kind of cross-reference in a way, but we haven't gone to that step into that piece yet. We are not referencing that. We are getting rid of it by the fact it didn't make this level of the document. This is not the point of the document at this stage. There's a whole bunch of things on animal keeping and all sorts of things we did not have in the Alternatives Plan.
Specific to that question, pardon the interruption, but do you anticipate that you will be recommending some maximum lot coverage in the general plan document?
It's going through all the staff looks right now, if we were to keep it. I honestly can't tell you exactly what we're going to do with it at this point because we haven't gotten to that stage, but it is typically covered in a zoning code. It is not typically...
So your typical approach is to not do it in the general plan and do it in the... So your typical approach is to not do it in the general plan and do it in the zoning?
And if we were to keep it, we would put a program in telling the county that in the next year after adoption of the general plan, you will modify the zoning ordinance to include these tables in their current format into the zoning code.
You said if we kept it, that's what we would do?
If we kept, if we wanted to keep that idea, the, the coverages.
Right.
And it appears right now they're more of a zoning component. We would put a program in telling you that this needs to be moved into the zoning and replicated there. It would have the same effect in law.
So your normal practice would be to do it in zoning and not in general plan? When you're doing general plan?
Typically to that level of detail, yes. Lot coverages, setbacks, all that type of thing is typically in zoning.
Okay, so we have identified something that was probably heading out of the general plan, even though you say we haven't got, you haven't gotten that level of specificity yet. But it was probably heading out of the general plan and into the zoning.
I'm, in preparation for responding to the comment and having a look at it, it appears something that I think off the top of my head would be more likely to go to zoning. But we haven't, it wasn't, I want to make sure you understood, it wasn't left out because we had an intent to get rid of it. It was left out because it wasn't the point of the conversation.
I understand that, thank you very much.
All right.
And somebody quoted the 75% integrated component, that's off the top of my head, that what I meant there is not anything to do with the climate action plan, but typically there's quite a bit of integration between all the different elements and things that you could move around to different places. There's some things that are very specific. For instance, the width of a street is probably gonna be in the transportation element, in any transportation element you find. But other things are more cross-cutting. Vehicle miles traveled could be argued to be in a, a climate change element. It could also be argued to be in the transportation element. Air quality and where that goes in the document. So there's a number of things. Part of, when you look at this for an element, we could try to be, by integrating, we think we can cover the robust needs. By making it a separate element, we think it'll degrade some of the other elements because too much stuff will be put into the climate change component, making it more difficult to use the other elements. We also have to remember, I, I understand, we can sit here and say climate change is the number one thing. As far as state law goes, all elements have to be treated equal. So climate change is not more important from the state's eyes of general plan law as the mobility element. You know, from the conversations and even personal feelings, we can say that it is the most important thing. But we have to treat all the elements equally as we go through the document and figure out what we wanna do. Our recommendation is integration, standalone we don't recommend because we don't think it has the same effect of law as the protections the general plan has. Integrated, we think, is a better mix, given how broad brush environmental is and how many places it touches. And that's just the base of our recommendation, we would yield to whatever direction you'd like to give from there.
Anybody over here, and you guys good, over there?
The general plan by law has to have certain elements, like noise, right?
The general plan guidelines state that you shall have nine elements. The elements do not convey as chapters necessarily.
And another one is air quality, right?
Air quality and environmental justice are the two new ones. Most jurisdictions, they are new, but most jurisdictions are handling those by integrating them into another topic, such as air quality is often put in with safety and environmental justice is actually cross-cutting because it touches all sorts of things.
Air quality could also be something that's associated with climate change, since it's based on pollutants in the air, right?
Absolutely.
I, we have, as I recall, a climate action plan, 2011 was, I think, last updated. Does staff know about this offhand? And so we have people in our CEO's office that work in energy, Alejandra is a big one, and we have, you know, put together a climate action plan that's been adopted, I believe in 2011 by the Board of Supervisors, right? So it's old, it needs updating, particularly in light of recent information. And then I also think about Erin Slack in our Public Health Department. I mean, she's totally into looking at ways that we can be healthier and reduce our greenhouse gas emissions as a part of that. So what I'm suggesting is we have some really good staff beyond the planning department and through, beyond the consultants that have been working on this. We already have a lot of the pieces in place. So when we talk about making a separate climate action plan as part of the general plan, a separate element, maybe incorporating it with air quality, it, it seems that this is something we can pull together because we already have the pieces. And I do agree that by putting them together, we will also be showing that kind of leadership that we showed when we did 100% renewables for our entire county in terms of our, the energy that we will be having our customers or the entire residents and businesses of our county using. So we've already shown that leadership, and I think, as was stated, by putting it in an element. Others may not have done it yet, but they will be doing it. And this is our opportunity, because we're not gonna update our general plan now for probably another dozen years, right? So to me, this is, we are on top of that wave and we need to do it. And we have all the pieces in place, and we have wonderful staff that can, that have already put together a lot of the information that can be plugged into it. So I don't think of it as being a really onerous thing to do. And I really do like the idea that we're gonna have policies integrated throughout it, just like we're going to do it with economic vitality. So many things in the general plan are going to be helping the economy, too. So it isn't that different as I, as I see it, and since we already have to do air quality, since we already have a climate action plan in place, and we have some great staff that have other information to plug into it, we have the tools to do this. So I would like to move forward on that. I think it's a great idea, and it's, the time is now, really, if we're going to act. And it does get back to that one question someone raised.
Let me just, Chair.
I guess it was Bruce Smith. If you believe in it, you wanna do it.
Okay, thank you Supervisor, okay. Supervisor Long, you had a question, real quick?
Yes. So the Agriculture Policy Committee, yeah, the Ag Policy Advisory Committee submitted a letter. They were asking the right to farm ordinance be included into the general plan. Is that being done?
Well, at this point, we didn't include it in the additional policy topics table because we knew that we were getting potential direction on including local regulations and do we wanna keep replicating that moving forward. So that's something that we would contemplate based on board direction. So that was the reason you just didn't see it in that table as a potential policy topic.
Okay. And then there was also allowing the transfer of entitlements between parcels to accommodate agriculture facilities and farm worker housing and encourage large parcel to remain in agriculture production. Is that something that we're considering?
The reason why I'm stating is we're talking about the farm worker housing and your parcel size, which is your, there's a lot going on there, and I wanna make sure that we're looking at that because what we don't want is Ag to be going away. And so what we're trying to do is have Ag working together. And I respect the work that the Ag Policy Committee is doing, and I wanna make sure that we're listening to them as well when we're going into this.
And I think that was one of the items we wanted to get, to confer with Jeff Barnes on. There were some items, again, we, you know, we weren't certain if it might trigger a sore majority vote, so there, there were a couple that we knew we needed to get more information on from council. So we, but definitely that's something that we, we could consider if we have board direction and it doesn't have a sore nexus. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hang on, do you have a real quick question, just real quick?
Good question. The, you spoke about environmental justice. That is that state mandated item for all general plans, isn't it?
Correct.
So that has to take into consideration, because I know we've discussed that in ATCD items, you know, that, that is a mandatory required item that we look at for, for the different, for the general plan.
Correct, it will be covered.
Will be covered, thank you.
Thank you. A question, real quick?
To comment, Staff, as it relates to Ag and segue to Supervisor Long. That nothing we're gonna, gonna move forward is gonna impede the right to farm issue and Ag's ability to, to access the benefits of the Williamson Act? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Okay, Supervisor Bennett has a one second comment.
Thank you, I know this is, the, the climate change is the issue we've had the most comments on from the public here today, and I hope to have a healthy conversation about this to try to put this in overall perspective. First of all, I've heard people say that if it's important, it needs to be in the general plan. And I don't think anybody is suggesting any of the policies that we're going to adopt, we're, we're going to adopt outside the general plan. We want these policies in the general plan because that has the force of law to it. The second thing is, I turned to County Council, I asked them earlier, I'm gonna ask them now, whether, whether it's in the general plan as an integrated policy or whether it's in a standalone element, does it still have the same force of law?
Yes, it would.
So, so, so we're not talking about whether this policy is legal or not legal or what the force of law has. The question is, does the format indicate our commitment to climate change? All right, that's, that's the issue that, that is out there. And, and I would offer, in my perception here, is you don't wanna, you don't wanna suggest that you're not interested in climate change when it is really, obviously extremely important. It's, it's the issue out there for us. So, but, but it is being portrayed, I think, as what format you choose indicates your level of commitment. And I just wanna make sure everybody knows that when we launched this general plan effort three years ago, we had the opportunity to identify what elements we wanted. And the issue of climate change was one of the options we had in front of us. And this Board of Supervisor, Supervisors chose not to make climate change an element, all right? For better or for worse, we did that. I think the level of people's commitment to that climate change had to be a standalone element. And so the issue was ripe then, the issue is more complicated now. Our staff is indicating that it's more complicated to add it when we are on a timeframe. So I appreciate, somebody who I have a lot of respect for, Mr. Young, saying, you know, you gotta separate the urgent from the important, right? This doesn't mean, whether, whether I put it here or here, if I put it in, that's, it's addressing the, the important, right? But the other, the other side of this is you have to address perception versus reality, right? And so I, I'm, I'm not sure that if, that if winning on perception means we don't in reality have as strong a plan, I'm not sure that's a win. But it is politically a win because it's, it'd be hard to be up here and be a supervisor and say, I wanna do anything less than all I can to emphasize climate change. But that's what we're wrestling with. That's the, the, the fundamental problem we have is that we, as a Board of Supervisors, made a decision, the Planning Commission made a decision, we all had this idea, we all had this topic in front of us. So Staff, we did address what elements we should have, and climate change was one of our options, correct?
I think it was. That was correct. Your Board has heard, even in the initial scope of work several times, that the issues that you were going to pick separately for an element and, and, and issues that you wanted to be cross-cut, cross-cutting. So that issue has been before you.
I would offer, a strong, strong argument was made that climate change would be stronger if it was integrated in. Now, certainly some people out there disagree, and there are lots of reasons why people disagree, everybody has a different perception of, of that. But that, we didn't have, you know, an outcry at that point in time. And now we find ourselves in a, in a more challenging, I guess, position that I wanna say. The, the sixth point that, the sixth point that I wanna make is because climate change affects so many things, I think the one speaker, Mr. Starkweather, I think, or knows, the other speaker said, you know, it's in here, 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 and here. That means you, you put all of those into one element, it's almost, if, if, if that cross-reference 60% of the, of the general plan, right? That means you're, 60% of the general plan's in, in this one element. Is that good government, right? Is that a good general plan? It does let me say, I made it an element, I made it a separate element. But you could accomplish many of these things if you said, I wanna do a climate action plan separate from the general plan. And there would be the perception, as it's been pointed out, look at all these counties that have done climate action plans separate, right? If I had to do over again, three years ago, knowing where we are, I'd say, hey, could we find a way to do that? But again, I'm, I'm struggling with that in, in terms of that. I would offer to you something like, like a carbon tax is what we really ought to be fighting over. Should we have a carbon tax? What role should Ventura County play in that? We should be fighting over the tough climate change policies, what should be the goals and the policies. But instead, we're gonna go after each other over the format, as you heard Bruce Smith say. It's a format question, right? So we're gonna, we're gonna somehow rate all of ourselves based on what format we chose when we, as a Board of Supervisors and a Planning Commission, already chose one format. We already said we wanted these elements, we did not bring that one up. We had the opportunity, we didn't, for better or for worse, right? And so I'm struggling, quite frankly, and I'm gonna really look to hear where everybody is on this in, in terms of the discussion. But I wanna throw out a possibility, possibility is to do a separate climate action plan, still integrate climate action in our general plan, still have a separate general plan, separate document, you know, that pulls all of those climate action plans together. But you, the consultant says, and I need to evaluate this, and I can't do this on this short of notice, he says, I actually think you may be weakening your other elements. You may be weakening your traffic element and weakening these other elements if you put it all in the, in the, in the, in the climate action plan. I need to scratch my head and go, why? But I could see that as a possibility. So that's another option. But we are, we are, we are right now throwing down the mandate that format is the most important, the action we're gonna take on climate action plan. And I would offer to you, it is not the most important. It is troubling, it is problematic, we're in a, we're in a weird spot. But the most important thing is what policies are we going to adopt for climate action plan? And I look forward to hearing from my colleagues up here who have all participated in one way or the other in getting us to the point where we're three years into the general plan and we have not ourselves called for it to be a separate element, and now we're faced with the request to make it a separate element. And whether that's a good decision or not, good government or not, I don't know at this point in time. I'm looking forward to, to getting that input. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, the, the question that I have, what's it gonna do to the time, our timeline for 2020 timeline that we have? We're only, what, what, a, a year and a half from that. So the question would be, what effect would that have on the timeline?
It won't have an effect. What, what I wanna make sure everyone understands is whether we integrate it into the entire general plan or pull it out as a separate element, it will be the exact same policies and goals.
What I'm, I think.
It'll be just be differently.
It's gonna take more time to do.
It won't. It's one more element, one more thing to review. It, it does have some effect. I don't think it's gonna significantly knock you off your schedule. I, I think there's also, if I could throw out there, I can't define it exactly, but there's probably also a hybrid in here somewhere where we, wildfire, for instance. Some people could argue that is related to climate change. Climate change is the causal effect of increased wildfire. But I would say that wildfire really should stay in the safety element because that's how it's dealt with. So there's a, there's one option where you can have a climate change element that deals with the primary climate change components like GHG, air quality, so we can focus the policies that are very specifically on the causal pieces of climate change and the carbon sequestration, et cetera, et cetera. But things like wildfires and how we deal with them, vehicle miles traveled parameters that are in the circulation component and called out that way in the state guidelines, that they stay where they are. And then we create this appendix that pulls all the pieces together so you can see everything that weighs into it. So it's kind of a middle ground, if you like, I just throw this out here as a, an option. You can have something called an element that highlights the key components.
Well, let's, let's get some questions as we go forward. Richard, you wanna go through your permission and ask question, you know, let them do there, then we'll go to the Board of Supervisors.
Sure, I'd, I'd ask the Commissioners for their comments, I'll start with Phil, Commissioner White.
Thank you, Richard. Two things struck me in the, in the public testimony. One is the area plan housekeeping, and the second one is about climate change, and I've been thinking about climate change a lot lately. But first, I wanna talk about the area plan housekeeping. As my predecessor, Bruce Smith, pointed out, these area plans had community, I'll read what he said, had community advisory committees, councils to advise staff and decision-makers on the development of the respective area plans. I live in Ojai, and there's an Ojai area plan that I wasn't involved in the development of, but I know has policies and land use plans that are very specific to that area and that the people who live in the Ojai Valley area, and that the people who live in the Ojai Valley guard those very jealously. And I think we really need to think about in the, in the argument of housekeeping and eliminating redundancy, that we bypass those communities in revising area plans. My gut feel is we should not be, uh, changing area plans at all. And I thought that was the policy of the board in the beginning of this, but, so that's one comment I want to make. The second area that, that I'm concerned about is climate change. And we do, we do have a climate, climate action plan in the, in the general plan already, and that's what's in the, the vision statement and guiding principles. And this, again, something I can hold in my hand. I'm going to read it. "The guiding principle for climate change and resilience says as follows: Reduce greenhouse gas emissions to achieve all adopted targets; proactively anticipate and mitigate the impacts of climate change; promote employment opportunities in alternative energy and reducing greenhouse gases; and increase resilience to the effects of climate change." That, in my mind, that is our, our climate action plan in, you know, paragraph. In order to accomplish that guiding principle, we'll need a comprehensive plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. I'm, I'm encouraged in talking to staff today and in talking to our consultant that, that the intent in developing the general plan update is to do the right thing, to do an integrated climate action plan within the general plan. And I understand that to mean a comprehensive plan that will achieve the, the guiding principles I, I just read. If that's the case, uh, and I certainly hope it is, I know we're, we've, uh, the citizens of Ventura County have invested a lot in, in consultants to put this together, and they're capable of doing this properly. I hope that happens. I'm not particularly concerned whether you call it an element, or a chapter, or a section, or an appendix, or whatever. I, I, my gut feel is an element would be the best, but if, if that would delay the project, I'm not in favor of delaying it. This, this should move forward. If everything can be an included, can be included in an appendix that summarizes everything, including what I just described, a plan, a comprehensive plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, I'm, I'm content. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Dukas.
Um, thank you very much for explaining everything to us and the clarification that there's no difference in the force of law between an element and part of the general plan. The reason why I like the integrated approach is because, um, there is the potential that we will have to make choices and that there will be conflicts between these different elements and the, the goals and how we want to achieve them. You want economic vitality. At the same time, you need to keep your eye on this menace that's going to hit, maybe, maybe not us, but our children and our grandchildren. So, I would like to see, uh, our plan for 2040 have every last detail, every other element that is contained in the plan to address climate change, not as a, an add-on, not as an addendum, not as something, you know, that, that leaves people in, in the future confused on, you know, what were we trying to do here? What was, these two things seem co-equally important. There needs to be a comprehensive cross-cutting in, in everything, in ag, with carbon sequestration and soil conservation, with water, with transportation, and getting ready for new modalities, and maybe reversing to some old modalities like walking, biking. But, um, so, so with regard to having it a separate element or have it integrated, my preference would be integrated. Regarding the area plans, I think that, um, uh, if you want to call one out, that's unique, always seems like that areas has separate and, and special, um, standards applied to it, and I don't have any objection to that. Let me just make sure that I... That's all, that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Kestley.
Wow, in all of the paperwork and the highlighting and the notes, my colleague here, Commissioner Dukas, basically summed up everything I was going to say, and I appreciate you doing it so eloquently so that I don't have to continue and, and speak on exactly what my colleague has to say. I, I appreciate everybody that's come out today, and I do feel that the cross-cutting integration is going to be the most effective way, that we make sure that all the important things about the county are, are kept intact. So, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Lot of reading, even though we had, I think, an extra week to go digest it all. It was still coming in this morning, I think. Anyway, um, I appreciate the fact that you've been cross-cutting these, these topics and issues throughout the, throughout the report. I, I see the benefit of that. And we've got the elements that we, that we obviously identified years previously that we're trying to get to. I think, though, there's a couple of things that, you know, I think Commissioner Bennett commented on it, when we're talking about the climate action plan, global warming, if you will. It's great to, to index it to a point somewhere in the, in the index where you can find all the things related to it. But I think, I think, uh, as I sit here now, as opposed to where I was sitting three years ago with the knowledge I had then, I think it's, it's a real, real important topic. It's right up on the, on the front burner now, across, certainly across the country, if not the state. And I think there ought to be something flushed out, uh, that puts it together so that if somebody wants to see what the county's action plan is, it goes beyond the basic policy paragraph on what we're going to do, flushes it out as a source document on how to proceed and what the priorities are and what should be addressed to try to stay on top of that, that topic. As I, as I, as I came in here today, you know, I was thinking, well, the things in my mind, ag, obviously, water, uh, I was thinking climate change, um, sea level rise, environmental justice. And those are all, all positive things, things that, that, that I've heard a lot of comments today. I mean, Commissioner, excuse me, Supervisor Zaragoza's comments about, about environmental justice and dealing with the, those areas of the county that, that, uh, to this, to some degree haven't benefited from what the county has available to it in the way of resources. This county is moving forward on the foundation, they're back on a soar. I mean, open space is extremely important to the DNA of this county. That's obvious. Open space and, and all the land restrictions that come under that, be it recreation or, or be it parkland. I think the county's taken the right approach in encouraging development within or as close to the existing urban areas that have been established to maintain that, that open space. And in doing that, maintaining the viability of ag to continue to be a, you know, a source of, of energy in this county. I was born and raised in this county, got into school in this county, I've worked in this county, I've worked ag, uh, as a young man. I can tell you, there's a lot of people that depend on ag in this county, even, you know, today. So, I think that it's important to, to, to do whatever we can to, to make sure ag is, is viable and has access to the resources it needs, specifically the water. And listen to the speakers, and they, they kind of ran the gamut. You know, the topics and, without getting redundant, you know, the topics were climate change, um, available water resources, housing, um, gas and oil, and, uh, environmental justice. I kind of, I, I heard the comment from the representative from WESPA, representing oil and stuff, and, and I understand that situ, that, that presentation. I under, also understand the importance that oil and gas has for the economy in this, and employment-wise within this county. But I don't necessarily agree with the fact that, that, um, that if we don't maintain and encourage further development of oil in this county, not, not discounting the resources that might be here, that we're going to have to import from across the ocean or someplace, the need to this county into the near future, when in fact, I think, nationwide, the country is exporting more than it's importing because of its production. So, there's, there's a, there's a calamity there. I just can't, you know, right myself with. Anyway, it, it doesn't matter to me whether the action plan for climate change is a standalone document as an addendum to the general plan. That, that might be most appropriate in order to, because it's obviously rooted in the general plan. And that keeps the general plan tight, and, and you don't get mired in, in 60% of it being related to climate change. You deal with the issues of land use and, and how we're going to incorporate it into the plan going forward. So, personally, I don't have any issue. I think it ought to be a document in some fashion that can be easily accessed and put into play if that, if and when that time comes. One of the comments the speaker made was on that issue is that, that, uh, there's two ZIP codes in this county that are directly impacted by climate change. I never thought of it that way, but I guess I happen to live in one of them. Good, bad, or indifferent. You learn things every day, and I don't have the time to research, and I appreciate the comments the public has made and the research they put forward. I think we're going in the right direction, and I would conclude my comments.
Could I just ask a question? And that is, it doesn't seem like anyone in the room really was onto the fact that we have a climate action plan already. It's dated. We're aware of that. So, I just, you know, when we talk about, like, part of the recommendations is try to get rid of redundancies. So, we're going to have this climate action plan, which really does need to be updated. So, maybe that would be part of something we can do later if we don't want it to be a separate element. But you're going to have a climate action plan, then you're going to have an appendix that will try to pull in those parts of the general plan that have something to do with climate action. You know, that, that's what will be in there. It won't have things in there that aren't relevant to the elements that are already there and the general plan designation. So, you know, if, if we're talking about a plan that has, like, trees, we want to put trees along roads or something, there's not going to actually be a plan that says, you know, "This is our policy for climate action for trees," because that would be in the climate action plan. Or we'll be talking about agriculture and talk about how it's nice not to have pumps, agriculture pumps that have diesel emissions. So, that might be an example of something that would be, again, in that appendix. But it, there's not going to be in the appendix, "We want to reduce diesel emissions to lower greenhouse gas emissions." So, we're just going to be taking pieces of the different elements and designations and descriptions that are already in the general plan, and those only will be what's going, as I understand it, into the appendix. If we want to actually have a document that's, "Here's our plan, here's our goals on the climate, on climate change," I think we're going to have to go to a document that actually covers that, has the goals, the vision. Essentially, it's the climate action plan. And it's unfortunate that it is older, because it does, so much has happened in the last seven years or so since we've adopted it. I see.
Supervisor Parks, I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing, right? The county has a climate action plan for the county operations, not the unincorporated area of the county, which is what we're doing now, very small, very, very narrowly focused. And we are working with that group, but it's a very different climate action plan for the unincorporated county.
I, I do remember getting in, for example, that climate action plan that we all want to plant trees, and it's not just on county-owned land, for example. Because here's another thing that we can do as a county, as we do of land use decisions and zoning approvals, that we can put in conditions to add trees, for example. So, it isn't specifically to county facilities. I remember that portion of it. But at any rate, we do need to have something updated and something that will actually begin with the vision and the goals, and then how we're going to implement the policies. But I don't think we're going to get the full scope that we would like to have just by taking, um, the appendix that cites all the other information in the, in the document. So, I, I appreciate the Commissioner Rodriguez, Commissioner White wanting to have a document, but that document's just where it is integrated in the general plan. It won't be a, a full document. But we could do that through updating our, our climate action plan. And, and, uh, but, just, I know, I'll stop talking in a moment, but I, I figure while I've got the mic, I'll just finish it. As I see a motion's going to be coming soon, I just wanted to throw out a, a couple of things that, from what I've heard, that we've discussed, that I'd like to see in that motion. We had the discrepancy in RPD. As I understand, they were just saying it's for the coastal area. So, maybe if we call it RPD 30 Coastal or RPD Coastal 30, that will take care of that. We did talk about changing the word city to cities instead of using the word urban. I think that's a great idea. I also look at, uh, we, there is comments in there about the wildlife and agriculture, and to see that we want to enhance both without hindering either, so would want that included in there because they're both valued. And, uh, whether we do an appendix or we do a separate element, it, there is not only all the reasons that Supervisor Bennett stated why we want, would want to have an element. I think another reason is, is an appendix, as was mentioned by the public, isn't that accessible to the public? Oh, if I go and I find the appendix, then I'll learn about it, you know, as opposed to, it, it's right out there, and it's an actual portion of the plan. And when we did approve the climate action, the different elements, I, I thought it was, we decided what it is we wanted to have special study of, and climate action was one of them. I wasn't aware until a few months ago that they weren't doing a separate climate action plan. So, I don't know if there was an actual vote. These are the elements. These aren't going to be the elements. But rather, we decided what areas did we want to cover. Health and all policies was another one. So, we are covering those in different ways. And I'll definitely leave it to however you guys decide it, and I've obviously expressed my opinion, and thank you all for giving me the time to do that.
Boy, if I could, just because at the beginning of this, early in this meeting, we specifically raised the issue of, we don't want just an appendix that just says, "We said we want to turn that into a narrative document." So, what we're, what we're getting contrasted is an element versus, you know, this appendix, it's just this, you know, and that's, we said, that's, that's not acceptable. If we're going to do it, we want it to be, whether it's going to be an element or not, staff's committed, saying one option for us to consider was not just, I think using the word appendix is a terrible word for us to use, because it's, it's, it is compiling all of them and create a narrative, saying, "This is our climate action plan, and it's in all of these places." of these places, but it addressed staff's concerns about not weakening the other elements. Whether that's what we want to do or not, but I think we should honestly be contrasting what the options are in front of us. It's not just an index and somebody doesn't know what we have. It's staff committing to taking the index and turning it into a narrative versus doing an element. Which is the right one? That's what we have, I think, in front of us to discuss. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Did you have something real quick?
Supervisor Parks pointed out one thing that I, that I had included in a letter I wrote to staff a couple of weeks ago, that there are three things that need to be in the climate action plan. One is this greenhouse gas emission reduction plan to achieve the, the targets that have, that have been adopted. The second is adaptation and resilience to the effects of climate change. For example, sea level rising at the beach, we have 47 miles of beachfront to think about. The third part that needs to be in there is what the county has already done for county facilities and, and as we park out here in the parking lot, you can see the result of that program with the solar panels in the parking lot. The county's already done a lot and that needs to be incorporated into this plan.
Okay. So we're going to have to have some recommendations, unless there's any comments that wants to be made before we go down that path. You're good?
Good.
Thank you, sir. You want to get home and watch the red wave happen? Is that what we're talking about? Yeah. Okay. Any comment?
I, I just want to make sure that, I, I mentioned before, you know, that, that we work on that open space and parks and recreation area for the El Rio Nylon Acres area. Make sure that, you know, that we, that we work on that.
Yes, sir.
Also, one of the other things that I'd like to see is that we look at the ADUs, you know, on regarding the partial count towards arena numbers. And I think it's important for our seniors and, and individuals that need to, to have some reasonable rents, which I think is extremely important. Thank you.
Richard, under this, where you-
Well, I'm waiting for Richard to say.
Okay, Richard's got it, because we've, you've got to, there, go first.
Yeah, we're good.
And then the board of supervisors go second. Okay, so if you have anything you want to-
Any other further comments between the commissioners or from the commissioners? Okay, then, can I have a motion? Commissioner White.
Well, I would like to, to throw out a, an idea for a motion and maybe, maybe we could discuss a little bit. It would, it would basically ask our commission to pass on this, what's been presented to us today, to the board for approval, but with a couple of caveats, as we've done on some other motions we've made as a planning commission. And those two that I'm thinking about have to do with this area plan housekeeping that we tread lightly in, in changing area plans without involving those communities. And the second, the second comment or caveat would be that we support the idea of an integrated climate change, excuse me, integrated climate action plan within the general plan, not a separate document outside the general plan, that is comprehensive in achieving the, the goals that we've already established. And maybe there are some other things that some of us on the commission would want to add, a third or a fourth caveat? If not, I would make that a motion.
Can, can I add to it?
That's what I just asked you for.
One of the things that you presented were slides that were suggestions of things to explore and some of those areas I thought were non-starters, that, that really didn't work throughout the, the county, particularly having to do with things that would conflict with SOAR on the ag land and uses of, of ag land in creative ways. There were certain things that were just, it's, it's like they want another run at the issue when the voters have already decided. And there were two items on that slide, if you could just look at those and think again. I'd also like to change, make some changes, that we get rid of that, that we add a note that it's in the coastal area where we have that RPD at 30, that we do identify at least in some portion, a wish list of underserved areas that don't have parks, that we change urban to just cities, because I think that's a lot clearer. That we can have both wildlife corridors and a robust, robust agriculture economy. They're not necessarily in conflict. We can do both. We don't have to make a choice. I'll, I'll go along with Commissioner White's, take out the area plan housekeeping that, where there's things taken out that are very, very important to his community, our communities. And I go back and forth on whether or not we should have a, a separate element or whether it should be, whether it should be integrated. I see points for both, so those were, those were the things that I would add to your motion, if I may.
Okay, anybody else want to add anything? No? Okay, so, you want to add something?
Thank you, sir. If I could interrupt, I, just to clarify the points that are being discussed on the land use, we were deleting the bullets about increased maximum residential building height and allow higher density development of residential parcels, I believe were the two items.
And it, and it had to do also with the, the ag, exploring alternative uses for ag land that's next to urban areas and some kind of increase in packing or something. It was on one of those bullets and it's already been decided by the SOAR vote. So they're non-starters. I don't see why we need to-
We allow for some.
Some of it.
So you have to see your president go. So just for clarification, Commissioner Dukas, we are, we've received direction from the board that we are not to touch any policy that has a SOAR implication.
Good.
So anything that's up there that has a SOAR implication, we're not, we, we've already received that direction. But I did want to understand very quickly your motion when you say tread lightly on this issue of, you know, redundant policies. I want to just read to you what we're asking and what, what the board says. I think we've, we've said, you know, there's over 1,700 goals, policies and programs for us to manage right now and that is a lot, right? It's, it's entirely too much. And so this redundancy is a very important issue. And what we said in the board letter on page 14 of 22, it says, as part of the development of the draft general plan, this, this project that you're sending us off to do here, a comprehensive list of the redundant general plan and policies will be identified and presented to your commission and to your board during phase five for recommendation, deleted, modification, or replacement. So we're also going to the TAC, we're going out to the community. We're not doing this just, just by your leave right today, right? We're just saying, this is, this is problematic. The TAC has brought this to our attention, the public has, and it is very time-consuming when you're writing the, the staff report for each policy that's saying that you're in conformance with each policy. So we're not planning to delete them right now. We're just saying, we want to prepare a list and come back through this process and show you what it is. And if so, if there's a policy in there that, that shouldn't be tweaked, we would move that to perhaps when we update the area plan. So there will be things moved to an area plan and as part of the implementation strategy, we will be saying, we're going to come to the board to find out dates that we want these area plans approved. So anything that's maybe the least bit tricky could be moved to that bucket, but I wouldn't want to stop this redundancy problem now because we do have 1,700 items to look at.
Okay.
Okay, so I would like to formalize the motion then, and it has my two parts. One, to tread lightly on area plan housekeeping. Secondly, to have an integrated, comprehensive climate change plan or element that you can hold in your hand and the things that Nora identified, which you, maybe you can summarize quickly.
Are you still wondering what those were?
Well, I, there were several that were brought up during the discussion. I could maybe run through a quick list and you could say if you wanted to put all those in your motion. I had on land use that we were going to delete the increased maximum residential building height and allow higher density development due to the fact those have already been covered through our chapter eight discussion today. There was a comment on the final bullet about coordinate with LAFCO and such to include special districts in that discussion. On the items about the water element, there was the recommendation on the second bullet regarding the state water, that this would not exempt cities from connecting that or transmitting that water across county on incorporated areas. On the housing element, there was a discussion about making sure we addressed farm worker housing and ADUs as part of the overall component to the level we can at this point, given that we're not doing the housing element.
And seeing that we're not doing Rena, right? The Rena stuff?
No, but to make sure that we don't do anything that would exclude that ability. ADUs are tied into the land use piece as well, so, and senior housing and all that, so to the extent we can. On the agricultural element, on the wildlife corridors, the fact that both have, have, both have value and both can coexist. On economic vitality, actually it probably doesn't exist on the, economic vitality came up at this point, it's probably about land use, but that is about addressing solar and alternative energy citing as a component. That would probably move under land use. Those are all the items that I had heard from the earlier discussion.
Okay. So there's the RPD that's just for coastal, the 30 units, you got that one?
Got that.
Okay.
So let me, can I, can I clarify that issue, because I've heard that several times? The RPD zoning, if it doesn't have a suffix at the end, RPD 2, RPD 10, RPD, the, the code as it exists right now in the non-coastal zoning ordinance defines it as 30. It's a default to 30. So we looked at all of the ones in the entire county that do not have a suffix. There's 11 parcels in total in the county and I believe 10 of them are owned by the federal government, a school district, you know, not private property owners that all of a sudden would show up and say, oh, okay, let's build to 30 acres to use. So we can address it and in the consistency, if we want to take it down to 20 in both of them, when we're updating the zoning ordinance to match with the, with the general plan, we can address it there. But I, I wanted to be clear, it's, it's in the code now, the 30's in the code now, we looked at the parcels, they're not really applicable, but we can take it down, but it's not just a coastal issue.
So is that, is that motion clear then?
It can be RPD 20? Okay. And-
RPD 30?
Do I, do I need to re-, do I need to reiterate my little, okay.
Do you have all that?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and a second. Take a vote verbally, I guess.
How do you want that, Lori? Verbally's fine? You want to do a roll call or?
I don't.
No? You have a yes, no? I know it's been long.
Raise your hand. Raise your hand.
So, you're good?
No, we're-
No, no, no.
I'm just, I'm sorry, commissioners.
Planning commission.
Ah, yes.
Commissioner Dukas? Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
So you got four over there. Okay. All right. Now, it's the board's turn and we just don't want to have Supervisor Bennett get involved in this, so.
Can I hear that?
Yes. It's going to change over here, I have a feeling, anyway.
That, that's fine. Don't, don't worry about it. I just wanted staff to understand, so the right, right to farm ordinance will be with, built into this? Okay. The Navy base military compatibility will be built into this? Okay. So we don't need to add that into the motion?
Well, I, I think that, you know, when the board's making a direction, they can direct us to, to do that, right? So we, we look clearly at the, the joint land use study, right? And we would go forward and take a look to see which ones are applicable and we would make those recommendations, you know, but if the board wants us to, to direct us to put them all in, you know, regardless, then that could be a motion, right? But we're going to, we're going to look at them very carefully. Some of them are just recommendations to, you know, work with the cities and, and develop conditions of approval. Not all of them are general plan related. And so I think Amanda said she pulled out the general plan related one, we just got that this afternoon, so I would want to really take a close look at that.
Okay. Because I, I don't want to miss that one, that's why.
Yeah, no, I don't.
And then the, we have the economic vitality sustainability plan that's built within the economic vitality cross-sections.
Yeah.
Is that true? Okay. So, and did we hear back from the Port of Winnebago? Because I know they do a lot of the climate control and reducing reductions and so forth.
They're on our economic development focus group and so they regularly do participate in the process and I'm certain they will be active voices in the policy comments.
Okay. Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we, we didn't miss that, because we did call it out in the other chapters and I wanted to make sure those were captured as well.
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
And then, you want to do something before, I know he has something, but you want to do it real quick?
Oh, well-
Let that stick up for you.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to say thank you to the planning commission. I support their recommendation. Sounded like they were talking about both the integrated, but having a separate document. I would just encourage also that we use that as an opportunity to actually put forward things that our county is doing, for example, looking for sites for solar, for wind, not just on county property, but the good work that we're doing with our energy people up in the CEO's office and our public health people that are, that are working on both of these, that we can incorporate their information too. And if we, if we didn't have it as a separate document, we wouldn't be able to have something like, where should we be putting solar and wind and those kind of things? So that will give us that additional boost that I think that will help our, our plan. But I do support the planning commission's recommendation. Thank you for the good recommendation and just with that, that addition on how we can dig a little deeper into the climate action information.
Okay, Supervisor.
My first question is just for staff, and that is, when did we sort of officially settle on what the elements were going to be? When did we first do that?
Your, your board in December 2015 actually adopted the mentor harnish scope of work as well as their contract for the project. And so that scope of work, that very same scope of work that was an exhibit at that board hearing is on our website and we have used it and continue to use it actually to, to a very accurate level. And in that was, was the indication for the cross, the cross-cutting cap.
So, so when we adopted, adopted the scope of work for the, for the contractor, we adopted, we identified the elements that we were-
Yes.
That we, we wanted him to focus on in terms of doing that.
That is correct.
So the, so I, I appreciate, this is, you know, it's really a challenge for the planning commission and the board of supervisors. When we're meeting jointly, they've, all three times, they've been challenging topics. And so I really appreciate the, the planning commission coming forward. I'm going to suggest, probably having separate votes here, Supervisor Floyd, if that works, just to make sure we're there, but I'll, I'll roll the things out and then I'll go back real quick. But one, the issue that's, I think, pretty important to me is the lock coverage one. And I think the consultant's general approach is to not have lock coverage in the general plan. We have sort of a tradition here in Ventura County where we've had lock coverage as part of the general plan. So I would like to give direction to the consultant that we want the lock coverage to be part of the general plan. I know you haven't decided one way or the other yet, but your inclination that this should be done in zoning, I think here in our county, it's, it's something that will give us more confidence as we go forward to have it in the general plan. So I don't know if you want to vote on these separately. I'll, I'll say each one of these things and then, then, then I'll go, go back. The second issue that was raised is the issue of the existing communities and I appreciate that the planning commission comment, the way, what you came up with. I want to have us clarify that we will not be changing the boundaries of the existing communities. Staff- Staff has said that, but it's been left a little bit...
Any planning area?
What's that?
Planning area, is that what you mean? The area plans?
Yes.
Yeah, the area plans.
The, the area plans of existing, or any boundaries of any existing communities, right? So the boundaries of existing communities, that we're making sure that we're not changing those, right? That the area, the current area plan land use maps won't be changed, and they'll be retained, because we have a pretty, I think, strong commitment to those communities, that we're not going in and doing specific plans during this general plan update, and if we are, we're going to make sure that they're, they're aware. So, my motion would be those two things. I've already mentioned it about lot coverage. The issue of the redundant policies, I think that really comes down to the same thing as, as what I've heard, in that staff, as I'm listening to you, I think you're trying to make a case that these redundant policies are a real challenge for you, or they cause some problems. I haven't seen it be a problem in the past, but I could see how it could be a problem in the future. So I'm not, I don't want to be toned after that, and at the same time, I don't want to have everybody get all nervous that in doing the elimination of redundancies, we're opening up the specific plans for, you know, potential modification. So this is what I would suggest, I would just like to hear a report back from staff on a way that we could assure that we, a way we could do redundancies in a way that would give us confidence that we weren't opening that up. If you can, if you could convince, if you could come up with that in a way that would make me feel comfortable, I could, I would be willing to try to honor staff's suggestion that 1,700 programs and policies are a lot, and then when you have these redundancies, your argument that you make, you know, we had a pretty strict one in the general plan, but when the area plans, they were actually sometimes weaker than they were in the, well, that's, you know, that probably is just because it got lost in translation or whatever. So I'm open to that, but I'm wondering if that could come back December 4th? That's our next board meeting, it would give staff just a little bit of time to explain more. It's just late, and we could, we could get in that explanation tonight. So, that's my thought about redundant policies. And the climate action plan, if I hear Supervisor Parks saying that she's supportive of what the planning commission has come up with, if we're unified in that, I can live with that. If we're not unified in that, then I, I have some ideas about what we would have to do, you know, to, to, to try to move, move forward with that. The other things that, that I have are, I would like to, you have a list of the items on pages 17 to 20, all of those different items we had listed there, it's too much. You, you guys have so much that you have to get done, there's all of these policies here. I'm going to suggest ones that I believe the board of supervisors ought to say, we might think these are really good policy issues for us to dive into, but they're not good policy issues for us to dive into the general plan update at this point in time. And so I, I don't know how else to do it, except to identify them on page 17 of 22, the third one, allow higher density development on residential parcels, right? That should be done when we're doing the area plans and the specific plans, not, not in the general plan update. It's just, it can be hugely controversial, and we're talking about trying to get the general plan update done. Is that important? Is that something that I think we need to have some of? Yes, in some communities, in other communities, no, as Supervisor Parks pointed out, but it's not something that we should dive into. Then the next one would be, in the same issue, under land use developments, coordinate with cities and LAFCO to reduce, streamline existing challenges for development projects. Great idea, but it's not germane to development of what's our land use planning in the unincorporated area. So I would suggest that staff not spend time on that, or I would make that the motion board.
What about the, yeah, increasing maximum building heights? You know, there are single-story neighborhoods, do, is it appropriate to increase maximum building heights in single-story neighborhoods?
I, I'll certainly let you bring up anything else you want, I just, let me just get through the ones that I have. And then, under the agricultural element, many things in here, you know, you know, came from the ag policy, Agricultural Preserve Advisory Committee. I just don't think that they are things, as Supervisor Parks pointed out, include commitment that land uses such as wildlife corridors, scenic resource zones, and public access trails will not conflict with agricultural uses on private lands. That's a huge policy thing, and it weighs the issue of wildlife corridors and all that against, and to, and to suggest that we're going to send staff down the road of trying to ensure that there will not be any conflict ever, would, it's just not appropriate in the general plan update. Provide greater opportunities and incentive for growers and livestock producers to participate in the Williamson Act? Great policy, but not a general plan policy. That's a policy that deals with the fiscal resources of the county, whether we want to do that or not. We already, unlike many counties, we already do that, so I would like to eliminate that. Maintain water resources for agricultural production, both in quantity and quality, so as to prevent the loss of agriculture due to competition for water with urban and suburban development. The whole issue of whether ag gets it, or whether urban and suburban gets it, is, we could spend a year in here debating that, it's not appropriate for the development of the general plan update. Allow the transfer of entitlements between parcels to accommodate agriculture facilities and farm worker housing, same thing, not in the general plan. It's a, a very good policy for that. Provide value-added marketing opportunities for agricultural commodities produced in Ventura County. It, I would also eliminate that. And then I believe on page 20 is the last couple.
And consider alternate uses on agriculture lands adjacent to existing public schools.
Again, if, I'd be happy to add whatever else, I'd be happy to consider whatever else you have when we get. Promote countywide coordination leadership for economic development. All right, so listen to that, provoke, promote countywide coordination leadership for economic development. I would venture to say that if you read most people's general plans, it wasn't about a policy of promoting coordination and leadership for economic development. Good policy may be something we want to do, but it's, it's beyond the scope of general plan. Streamline the permit process, we've undertaken this before, we undertake it at a number of different times, not a general plan aspect. Explore options for opportunities for commercial air service and aviation-related spinoff for local businesses. Again, and then encourage micro-business development such as Cottage Food Industries. And again, I would put that under, not in the general plan. I have, I would like, because of the requests from the naval base that we have, we add, consider the military compatibility aspect to the general plan. And I would also like to add, staff, consider how we could do more to promote renewable energy development in Ventura County, because that will fit so much with the climate action plan. I realize that's, that's a lot, I don't know how, I'm happy to make that all one motion, I'm happy to make it a series of motions, and, and anyway, so...
Okay, first of all, you said if people were comfortable with the planning commissions, you were comfortable there, right?
The, the, the planning, the plan, I don't have, I, I, I'm not opposed to the planning commission recommendation.
Okay.
The, the question is if we're unified on the issue of, of the climate action plan, because if we're not unified on that, I think then I have other, other places we'd go. But yeah, I, I would, I'm, I'm...
As I heard the rec, the recommendation that the planning commission had, it was to have an integrated document, but also a separate document that could also be an element. That was the motion, that was...
Right, you understood it that way?
I didn't hear it as an element.
I, and that's the words I heard come out of your...
It's a plan or element.
So that, that was approved as a, a separate plan or element?
Well, then, then, then I would...
Let's find out if that's what it was. Is that what, is that what you, you made the motion?
That was, that was the motion.
Is that how you did it?
I said the integrated, oh, excuse me. I said integrated comprehensive climate change plan or element that you can hold in your hand.
Sure, now that leaves us with, is it a plan or is it a element?
So you get to decide.
Yes, so, see...
Okay, so he, he asked us to decide, do we want a plan or an element?
Right, so if that's the case then, because I thought Supervisor Parks was saying she was supportive of doing it as a plan, I would, this would be my motion in terms of how to handle that.
Let me ask, real quick, so is that what you were thinking, a plan was fine?
That idea that it's a separate document, within the general plan, that was also part of the motion, so it's a part of the general plan, you can call it what you want. I think calling it an element doesn't cost any more money, changes any of the convenience factors or the timeframe, but if there's a lot of resistance about calling it an element, call it a plan, but it's part of the general plan, and it's also integrate, it's also integrated, but it's a separate document.
Okay, so she said it didn't cause that, do you see that? Do you guys see it that way? I want to make sure I understand exactly what you're saying.
I think our consultants can probably speak to that, but we did check in last night with our consultant responsible for this plan, and he did say that he would have to review the scope of work. Obviously, if you're creating a new, a new element, that is a standalone element in the general plan that will take more time, right? You do have to write the introductory section, you have to match it with everything, so I think it's fine, it's a complete policy decision, you can direct us to do that, but I can't tell you today that it won't take another few months and, and, and a little bit more money. It's not a huge deal, but it, we're not going to be able to. The general plan deadline, our timeline, is really razor-thin, right? We're, we're going to leave here today and, and, you know, and start work tonight to, to make this timeline happen. So any little thing like this, it will impact it by, you know, months.
Supervisor Foy? I, I just want, I want to get this, I want to get this.
And our energy staff, I think, would be also a benefit.
I, I have an option, I think that...
Existing staff.
Okay, let's, let's, let's... I have an option that I, that I think, that I think could help address this.
I'm going to ask you to comment when we're done here.
Yeah, so this, this is the option that, that, that I think. I think it's important for us to be unified on this thing, because I think that unfortunately, some people are going to take this out there and say, oh, because you chose this format over that format, you don't care about climate change as much as somebody else, and that's would be, I think, bad for Ventura County, because I think we have a strong commitment. We went to 100% renewable energy on that. We have a strong commitment, and I don't want to send a mixed message out there about that, and unfortunately, that's what's going to happen on this thing. So, at the same time, I want to be sensitive to the fact that you're suggesting there may be some delay, and our consultant is suggesting we may actually be weakening the other elements, because he said something, he said, it depends on how you do the element on, on, on climate change. There may be a way that you can do an element on climate change that addresses this perception issue and still doesn't weaken the others. So this is what I would propose is the best solution for us, and that is, we postpone just this decision about whether climate change is going to be a separate element or a document as part of the general plan, but, and, and give staff some time between now and December 4th to educate us on different ways, and even to explore different ways that it could be an element, but he talked about an element where maybe it wasn't every element was all in, in that part of it, but it was in these others, and only the key aspects of that element. But that's the best way for us to move forward in a united front on this, and I think it is important for us to do this. It'd be easy for us to set each other up in terms of that.
So, so what staff recommendation was an integrated climate action plan, and because we have cross-cutting policies for climate action plan, healthy communities, environmental justice, which is SB 1000, climate adoption and resolution, and sea level rise. So you're telling me all of those really don't matter? It's only climate, climate control, action plan? Each of those items that is on the cross-cutting policy will be outlined. So I'm, I'm really missing this. I don't want to slow things down, I want to integrate, and I want to make sure that we have climate control in all, that we have healthy communities, that we have environmental justice. So I think we're confusing this a little bit, I don't think one is, one is more priority than another, and if you're calling out as another element, this item, I, I mean, I don't think, I think what we should do is follow the steps of what the staff is telling us, which is the integrated environmental action with it. And that, that would be the motion that I would put out there. And I believe that healthy communities and environmental justice are all just the same, and that you would pull those out, the same thing as a climate control.
So that would include consideration of where should we put solar energy, or where we should look at wind? None of that's going to go in the general plan, because that's not part of, you know, the existing, any of the other things that you can...
Well, actually, it will, because you already talked about the environmental vitality element, in which you're talking about the promotion of solar and renewable energy there.
And I am asking...
And that cross, cross-functioning is your environment, your climate action plan. So if you look on the matrix of it, it would still be hit, because you've added that as part of the policies.
And I've asked, and I've asked for renewable energy, if, if that motion passed, I've asked for renewable energy to be considered as an element, so that's where you could...
Right, so then... So we're going to put renewable energy in the economic vitality plan? That's not in there yet?
I don't know where, I don't know where staff is going to put it. Alls we're doing right now is identifying as a topic that we want staff to address, just like they're addressing these other topics.
Shouldn't ask for our opinion.
Well, you're not going to get it unless they put it in there.
Well, I, I heard him, that's what he had suggested as part of the motion, along with the Navy Base, making sure that we had military compatibility and so forth. That's what I heard.
On other items that, and I appreciate Supervisor Bennett's suggestion, let's put the discussion off, because we may come up with something that will work for all of us on the...
And I agree with that, too, I think we, I think we had a point.
And allow coordination in both internally in the general plan, but also information that we may want to add to it on this topic. But Supervisor Bennett mentioned many things in his motion, so the first one regarding lot coverage, I just want to say lot coverage really is a zoning issue. As I understood what the consultant had stated, and you can do it again, is that you could make it a policy that we want to do something on lot coverage, but the actual implementation has to be at the zoning level. Is that right?
One policy, if we want to keep lot coverage, I would suggest we do it against the designations that are actually general plan designations, and let the zoning code pick up zoning stuff. Because right now in the general plan, they're actually zoning designations, they're not general plan designations. So it's, it's an odd mix at best right now, and so if we want to keep lot coverage, I'd recommend we do it against the designations in Table 8-1, and bring that back to your consideration with the recommendation as a program that we update the zoning code to pick up down to the nuances of each individual zoning designation. I think that covers both sides of it. You get the lot coverage still, it'll be at a general plan level instead of a zoning code level, and we'll pick up that same table then in the zoning code.
And then, as for the, he was tossing out that he didn't want to have in-depth look at, there are a couple of others that I would add to that also. One is taller buildings, just the idea that we would want to encourage taller buildings, I don't think is something that necessarily a benefit, and it may work in some areas, but not others, so I wouldn't have that be a policy.
Okay, we're ready to vote, and we should break this up. If everybody's clear what our, we have a, who has a what motion? So now we can start, because I'm sure Lori's going to go, what are we voting on? And let's do one at a time. So, are we, first of all, are we voting on what the planning commission voted on? Is that what we agreed to start with? Is that anything added to it, then we're going to add a separate one?
But that's part of the, isn't that part of the, of the whole conversation, you know, what, taking into consideration what the planning commission voted on and so...
Yes.
I, I don't think we vote on what the planning commission gave us, I think the planning commission gave us a recommendation.
And what their recommendation is, are we voting, are we voting on that kind of a recommendation, or let's make sure we're clear, because...
I think it's incorporated.
So I would make a motion...
Okay, go ahead.
To approve what the planning commission had suggested, or had made a motion on, and to include the items that Supervisor Bennett and Supervisor Parks had stated in regards to the list associated for the public advisory group topics for consideration in the general plan, which included also the, all the different items that we talked about with is, do you want them called out again?
Let's, let's, let's stop there, I want to ask, does this make sense to what we're saying here to you over there? Because you have to deal with this issue. I saw the smile on her face.
That's why I was thinking of going down the list.
We spend a considerable amount of time on the tape when we're, when we're finished here. You know, so I, I do want to, I do want to make, you know, clear what we have, if you're going through item 1, A, B, C, D, 2, and 3, right? We do need to have some recommended actions.
Yes.
I did take some notes about what both Supervisor Parks and Bennett said about policies, and I agree that, you know, a lot of those don't belong in there, that's what we heard from our tech, that's what we heard from the public, but some of those can be targeted when we do area plans. So I didn't, I didn't really see any issues there. The, you know, the lot coverage issue is really, I mean, since I've been here, I've been a practicing planner for over 25 years, I've been the planning director for a long time, it's very odd that those, that lot coverage standards are in the general plan. I've never seen it that way, nobody else has it that way. Normally, development codes, lot coverage, setback height, all of that stuff is deferred into the ordinance, so for years, it's been on our to-do list to kind of say...
In the zoning ordinance, right?
I mean, in the zoning...
In the zoning ordinance, right.
I mean, in the zoning ordinance, yes, that those items should really be moved to the zoning ordinance. There's a, there's a problem, you know, it's more complicated to amend the general plan. There's only, you're not supposed to amend that document very often. There's only four times a year that you're allowed to do it, and those are really development standards. So I did like the idea of being able to wait for a year and move it forward, but like Rick said, there was no intention there. These are high-level topics that we're talking about. There's no intention to move forward and have no lot coverage at all, ever, right? So they'll either be in the general plan until we correct them in the zoning ordinance, until we place them there, or they'll stay in the zoning, or they'll stay in the general plan. That's, that's kind of up to you. And just the one more thing, the, you know, the issue about the, you know, coming back on the 4th. And I just want to be honest with you about our timeline on that, that, you know, we're coming back on the 4th on wildlife corridors, and that's taking up all of our time. And so I don't have the staff resources to come back and answer these questions for you, even in the, you know, in that short amount of time. So it seems like a long time, but the time you involve the whole county family and what it takes to get here, and to do the analysis and the work, and work with the team with the schedule that we already have, that's a real tight timeline for us to come back and do that. And so we did say that we would do that through the, through the Planning Commission. So those five hearings that the Planning Commission have is going to be all available and open to the public. So that's, you know, that's another way that we could go about it as well.
So when you say accept a staff, the Planning Commission's recommendation, Planning Commission, one of their recommendations was for us to decide whether it's going to be an element or not. And so we have...
Yes, so... It was one, it was actually a document that did the integration and then also stood on its own.
It was an integration action plan that you will have, which they had described, which would be listed completely as to what that action plan, that was within all the elements.
And if everybody can accept that, then we're unified moving forward in terms of that. But if, but if it has to be an element, then we have a different issue.
If you call it an element, it becomes more expensive. But I do want to say we are losing that opportunity of putting things in it, like locations of, looking at where, what are good locations for renewable energy and those kind of things. We're just leaving that out there. It's actually part of the plan.
Staff, is that the case? Will we be losing the ability to identify locations for renewable energy, et cetera?
No, actually, we were directed in April to start researching that. So we are working on identifying renewable energy opportunities in the county where we might have a geographic advantage. But, yeah, we can, those can, those can live in the elements that may be more appropriate for them. And so we haven't decided, because we're still gathering a lot of information and research on what opportunities exist for the unincorporated area. But, but those topics will be covered, renewable energy.
Mr. Chair, right?
Then we are also, I just threw in, when we were talking about the changes of that long chart, I mentioned once, but the, one of it was not having agriculture near schools or...
You want to scourging that?
I don't think we should be having that on that list either.
You got a question, comment?
Just to clarify again, if, whether we have it as an integrated item or as an element, the exact same policies and programs will be brought forward. It's just a placement in the document. Solar energy, alternative energies, sea level rise, GHG emissions, VMT mileage controls, all that will be covered in this general plan regardless of how we organize it.
Correct. And, but it, will it end up being put together into a one appendix, or whatever you want to call it? That was, that's kind of the question. It's going to be...
I think staff has clearly answered that. You're going to turn that into a document with a narrative, correct, staff? Said that multiple times.
All right. So the motion is to have the plan with the Integrated Climate Control Action Plan incorporated within. We've talked about Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Parks, the suggestions there, along with mine. Also, we had the different items from the planning division that they had called out. Is there any other question? Did I miss something? Please, help me.
Hang on, hang on, we got to hear.
Just for the record, you missed your own recommendations.
Awesome. I was thinking of all of you, not me.
So we included the right-to-farm components, the JLU's policy incorporation, and the economic vitality plan.
I'm so glad you're listening. Thank you.
Okay. We all understand that? Kim, you understand? You're good?
I want to be clear, in the interest of, the redundancy question is still left out there, because my motion was to bring that back. And so we got this redundancy question. Your motion was to be, to err on the side of...
They're going to bring it back regardless, that's...
Yeah, but I think we go back, the redundancy issue, we know it causes problems. I know just dealing with it, so many different things are very difficult within the plan. We've got to work on that issue. And I think you guys would say redundancy is a big issue to you, right?
In the spirit of moving it forward, I would agree with you, as long as staff brings it back and tries to respect Commissioner White's recommendation, tread lightly and be cautious that people will perceive this as an attempt to try to change the area plan. Tread lightly on that, and then it'll be our responsibility to check and make sure you actually have treaded lightly.
Okay.
I could live with that.
Okay, we can...
And we have one other last thing, and I do want to support Ms. Pearl Hart's point regarding lot coverage. We need to have it in our zoning ordinance, and that, that's where it belongs. And there isn't an urgency to do that, but that, I think, would be the best way to do that.
I agree with that, too.
I agree. Okay.
Yeah, a lot we're agreeing on.
Laurie, I think we got a motion. We need one vote. You go with one vote, or you need someone?
Can I just use a computer?
No, I'm, I'm saying, but you're good. Pardon?
So you guys will vote electronically?
Okay, we can vote electronically, that's fine.